Wake up, wake up, give yourself a shake up. Get your body moving. Reach up, jump up, give your friend a thumbs up. It's another new day. Wake up, wake up, give yourself a shake up. Get your body moving. Reach up, jump up, give your friend a thumbs up. It's another new day. Get your feet dancing to the beat. Get your body moving. Raise your shout, let your feelings out. It's another new day. Wake up, wake up, give yourself a shake up. Get your body moving. Reach up, jump up, give your friend a thumbs up. It's another new day. Wake up, wake up, give yourself a shake up. Get your body moving. Reach up, jump up, give your friend a thumbs up. It's another new day. Get your feet dancing to the beat. Get your body moving. Raise your shout, let your feelings out. It's another new day. Get your feet dancing to the beat. Get your body moving. Raise your shout, let your feelings out. It's another new day. Get your feet dancing to the beat. Get your body moving. Raise your shout, let your feelings out. It's another new day. It's another new day.
Wake up. Time to get out of bed. Wipe your eyes now, you sleepyhead. Big day ahead today. Grab some breakfast and well, on your way. Come on, get the kids ready for school. Off to the bus and the golden rule. Standing in line, well, it's, it's time to go. Shuffle on the bus now. Come on, don't be slow. You're in for the ride of your life. School's starting virtual or live. Your parents, well, they've got a seminar to attend. Risky business, so they won't be out on a limb. So folks, let's take a seat. It's not live, I know, but it will be neat. You'll learn some things and have some fun, too. A different approach, one that's new. So the countdown started and soon we'll begin. Hold on tight while we let more in. And it's time for me to say goodbye. Risky Business starts in five, four, three, two, one.
Good morning, and thank you for joining STSBA in Skisbit online this morning for our annual Risky Business Seminar. I'm South Carolina School Board Association Executive Director Scott Price. Although we will greatly miss being together in person this year, we are pleased to offer this year's conference virtually for our valued Skisbit members. This year, your jobs have been more important than ever as you prepare to safely reopen schools for your students and staff. On behalf of STSBA in Skisbit, we thank you for all that you do. We want you to know that your long hours and behind the scenes duties that sometimes feel quite thankless are not lost on us. We see you giving your all and we appreciate you. During the next few hours, you'll hear from an engaging slate of speakers, and I hope you will take today as a chance to sit back, be encouraged, and refuel as you learn about some of the latest in risk control management. We also encourage you to share and discuss these ideas with your staff and board members back in your districts. So thank you again for being with us today. I'll now turn it over to Director of Insurance Services, Steve Mann.
Thank you, Scott. We are excited to welcome you today to Skisbit's first ever virtual conference. We have a great turnout for today's event with more than 100 folks joining us from around the state, including school board members, district leaders, and staff. I'd like to start this morning by introducing our Skisbit Board. Our 14-member board consists of 10 members appointed by the School Board Association, two members appointed by the School Administrative Association, and two members appointed by the School Business Officials. Our board members are Cheryl Burgess, Chair, from Lexington III, Leigh Anne Lorto, Vice Chair, from Fort Mill, Cynthia Brown, Marion School District, Jamie Devine, Ristland School District I, Dr. Harrison Goodwin, Chesterfield School District, Charles Govan, from Darlington School District, Anne Marie Green, from Lexington I, Jody Hamm, from Newberry School District, Amy Heard, from Anderson V School District, Gail Hughes, from Dorchester II, Kimberly Johnson, from Clarendon II, Reverend Darryl McGaney, from Sumter, and Dr. Christina Melton, from Lexington-Ristland V, and Travis Sloan, from Spartanburg I. The Skisbit Board meets twice a year, and they vote on our annual budget in May. Please join me in thanking them for their service to the trust. Today, you're going to hear from some exceptional speakers on topics ranging from leading during a pandemic, new fire safety regulations, anti-bullying solutions, and making ethical decisions. We hope you'll walk away with some new information and ideas to implement in your local districts. With the conference being held virtually, I know we will all miss the opportunity to network with colleagues from around the state. However, we encourage you to submit your questions and comments using the chat feature in Zoom. Thank you again for being with us today and for trusting us with your workers' compensation, property and casualty, and risk control management needs. It's truly our honor to serve you as you navigate through these unprecedented times. Please don't hesitate to reach out if the trust can be of any assistance. Now let's get started with our opening presentation, "Emerge: What Now, What Next?" with Steve Gilliland. Steve Gilliland is a member of the Speaker Hall of Fame, and he's one of the most in-demand, top-rated speakers in the world. Recognized as a master storyteller and brilliant comedian, he can be heard daily on Sirius XM Radios, Laugh USA, and Jeff and Larry's Comedy Roundup. With an appeal that transcends barriers of age, culture, and occupation, plus an interactive and entertaining style, Steve shows audiences how to open the doors to success in their careers, their relationships, and their lives. Presenting to over 250,000 people a year, more than 2 million have heard him speak with audiences encompassing 51 industries, Steve has the distinction of speaking in all 50 states and in 15 countries. As one newspaper stated, quote, "Steve is what happens when the humor of a stand-up comic collides with the inspiration of a motivational speaker." Now help me welcome Steve Gilliland.
Welcome to this special presentation coming to you from the studios of Primo Productions in Greenville, South Carolina. Now, before I get into the content of this presentation, I want to take you back to a moment we all experienced. Cast your mind back to when the year 2020 began and imagine someone telling you the following. Within three months, schools will be closed. Almost all public gatherings will be canceled. Hundreds of millions of people around the world will be out of work. Governments will be throwing together some of the largest economic stimulus packages in history. In certain places, landlords will not be collecting rent, or banks collecting mortgage payments, and the homeless will be allowed to stay in hotels free of charge. When you begin to round up opinions on how the pandemic might change how we think about various aspects of life and work, many people are optimistic, but everyone is questioning the future of education, healthcare, and if working from home will be the new normal. Any glance at history reveals that crises and disasters have continually set the stage for change, often for the better. The global flu epidemic of 1918 helped create national health services in many European countries. The twin crisis of the Great Depression and the Second World War set the stage for the modern welfare state. For many people today, the scale of the coronavirus calls to mind 9/11 or the 2008 financial crisis, events that reshape society in lasting ways, from how we travel and buy homes to the level of security and surveillance we're accustomed to. While 2020 started as just another year, and 12 weeks later, we were forced into a massive timeout, forced on us by a coronavirus, we are still trying to get used to the radical lifestyle change the virus has brought. But we're also beginning to think about the end of the crisis and what the world will look like afterward. This pandemic has presented opportunities such as more sophisticated and flexible use of technology, reconnection, and a renewed appreciation for the outdoors and life's other simple pleasures. No one knows exactly what will come, but society, government, education, healthcare, the economy, and our lifestyles will change. The good news is that we all have an instinctive ability to adapt to most situations, but our ability to change isn't. The challenges we face in life will test our courage and willingness to change. As individuals, it is not the mountains we must conquer, but ourselves. While we continue to face many unknowns, it is crucial we develop the right mindset to persist and emerge strong-minded from challenging times. So how do we navigate on a course that we never planned into a future we never imagined? Challenge yourself. Challenge yourself to be grateful, confident, and determined. Challenges are what make life interesting, and overcoming them is what makes life meaningful. I was taught early in my life, if it doesn't challenge you, it won't change you. We all need to look for a way, not a way out. Challenge yourself to be grateful. Being grateful is a choice, a prevailing attitude that endures and is relatively immune to the gains and losses that flow in and out of our lives. When we face a detour, gratitude provides a perspective from which we can view life in its entirety and not be overwhelmed by temporary circumstances. As troubling, challenging, and terrible as this pandemic has been, it too will pass. It has been a life-changing event, both negative and positive. So if I were to ask you, as a result of these upsetting times, what are you grateful for? What would you answer? Now, I know some of you just said to yourself, "Come on, Steve, are you serious? My entire world turned upside down. I'm a single parent raising three children, and on top of working from home, I had to become their teacher and full-time daycare worker. And you want me to be grateful? Yes, I am challenging you to be grateful for the difficult times. During these times, you grow. When do you grow the most in your marriage? When there is money in the bank? The vacation is paid for and everything is running smoothly and efficiently? No, you grow in your marriage and profession when hitches occur and you are forced to grow. Be grateful for your limitations. Your limitations give you opportunities for improvement. I challenged every single person that works for our business to learn something new during these times and improve on something we already do. I have consistently suggested everyone to take this time as an opportunity to get better in your personal life and in your professional life. Even as you attempt to develop, new challenges will arise every day. But remember, these tests will build on your strength and character. Every mistake you make will teach you a lesson. Adversity does not build character, it reveals it. You've always been told, "Don't worry about what you can't control, focus on what you can control." My version is that, instead of worrying about what you cannot control, shift your energy to what you can create. Remember, as individuals, it is not the mountains we must conquer, but ourselves. These times have helped me to understand better than before that so many things I have worried about are of no importance whatsoever. These harsh times have given me the opportunity to slow down, recharge, and a time to restore. I've gotten closer to my family. I've learned more about my neighbors, friends, and most importantly, me. As I challenge you to be grateful, here is an exercise that I believe will help you. To exercise gratitude, answer your why. At this very moment, some people watching this virtual presentation have felt like quitting, or at the very least, something in your personal or professional life seems hopeless. The next time you feel like quitting or feel hopeless, think about why you started. In October 2019, I spoke at the Duke University School of Medicine. After I finished speaking, a member of the audience approached me and asked me if she could share a story. The woman began by telling me that prior to coming to Duke University School of Medicine, she worked for a manufacturer who made some type of precision molding and assembly. All she knew was that they were a contracted outsourced manufacturer for the medical device industry. She said when her friends and family would ask her, "How's work?" She would always respond, "Living the dream." On more than one occasion, she would be asked, "So what exactly do you do?" Her response was always the same. "I'm just an administrative person who does a little of this, more of that, and whatever someone asks me to do." The bottom line is that, like so many people, I used to wake up every day, go to work, put in my time, and looked forward to getting home. It was a paycheck to help pay our bills. She went on to say, "Two years ago, I wasn't feeling good. I had pain, muscle weakness, and a little bit of trouble walking. I went to the doctor and after running what I consider to be a routine checkup, she wanted to send me to have an MRI on my spinal cord. The test revealed I had spinal cancer. It was the treatment that would not only save my life, but change my life forever. It was at my first radiation treatment that I noticed our company logo as part of the radiation device that was being used for my radiation therapy treatments." She said, "A rare form of cancer treated by a rare device built with some very intricate and rare parts, parts that were manufactured by the company I worked for." It was at that moment I answered my why. Never again would I respond to someone's question about my job, "Living the dream," or "I'm just an administrative person who does a little of this, more of that, and whatever someone asks me to do." I stopped waking up every day to go to work and simply put in my time to garner a paycheck. For the first time in my life, I knew my why. During the biggest challenge and most difficult time of my life, I was grateful for the wake-up call. Without my severe medical condition, I would have never found the why in my work. If you are going to emerge from this strong-minded, look at what you're grateful for. For those of us who have had the privilege to stay indoors, being forced to remain in one place has highlighted things we used to take for granted. Going out used to be a thing we did when bored, but now we realize it is actually a privilege. Even simple comforts like getting a package delivered to the doorstep become special when we realize how crippling it feels to have that taken away. My grandma used to say, "The things you take for granted, someone else is praying for." We have a lot to be grateful for. Although things might not look good right now, we can look forward with hope that one day soon, we'll all go out again. We'll be able to see our friends, travel to places, and get on an airplane, and what a privilege it is. We'll get to shop again, try on clothes at the store to see if they fit, and hopefully have a new attitude towards money after being forced to make do with so little. We'll get back to our lives with a newfound appreciation for the things that made us feel alive. So I am challenging you. What are you grateful for in your personal and professional life? What have you learned about someone else that you didn't know? What have you learned about yourself? What has made you smarter, kinder, gentler, humbler, and more patient? This pandemic has provided us with an opportunity to become smarter about things. I can only speak for myself, but I look at a lot of things differently. I don't take things for granted because everything feels more fragile. My wife, children, family, neighbors, friends, and most importantly, my health. This worldwide pandemic showed us where to look, but didn't tell us what to see. It is up to us to take this challenge and be grateful for the opportunities it gave us. There is always something to be thankful for. How about a dose of humorous gratitude? Did you ever think you would hear the following? "The federal government will give us money, we don't have to pay back." "You can defer your student loans to become current on payments just by entering the program." "Liquor stores are an essential business." "Professional athletes are going to take a pay cut." "You don't have to file your taxes on time." "Zoom stock will go through the roof." "In nine months, there will be a shortage of obstetricians." In nine months, there will be a shortage of obstetricians. Anheuser-Busch is making hand sanitizer instead of Bud Light and using more alcohol in it. Homeschooling is tough, but think about how much the parents have learned. You don't have to see your coworkers in person. On a serious note, if you want to emerge grateful, make a list. Slowing down to see a beautiful sunrise and sunset. Working with a team of people who are willing to charge forward even in the midst of challenges. Your health. A family that checks in. Laughter. Friendships. Utilizing your skills to navigate these hard times and learning new ones. A roof over your head and food to eat. No scheduled activities to keep families from eating meals together. People all over this nation sitting down at sewing machines to make masks. It's not winter, so at least we can go outside, open windows, and breathe fresh air. Birds singing. Neighbors doing creative things to help parents and children hold it together. Your pets. I actually made my own list and shed a few tears. It became very clear to me as I prepared for this presentation, in the midst of these heartbreaking moments, I have a lot I can be thankful for. Gratitude is also a perspective. Growing up, I was close to my grandmother, who was always so positive about everything. She always said, "A house to clean is a place to live. Laundry to do is close to wear. And dirty dishes is food to eat." When I think back to how she acted and responded to people, I am convinced she has a lot to do with my outlook on life today. Getting and staying in the mindset of gratitude is not always easy during difficult moments in our lives, but shifting our focus to things we can be grateful for is good for our mental health and good for the soul. As you look for a way to emerge strong-minded, challenge yourself to be confident. Confidence is contagious. Although confidence is something that happens within yourself, it or lack of it can be clearly seen and felt by those around you. This is invaluable. By building your own confidence, striving to be the best you can be in this situation, and allowing yourself to be enabled, you absolutely will impact the lives of others. Challenges are opportunities to grow. That growth takes place out of potentiality, your potentiality, which is infinite and highly active in every moment of life. Come to know yourself as that. You are pure potential experiencing life through what seems like a limitation. Challenges are spikes in that imaginary limitation barrier that guides you to awareness and confidence. Life's experiences will either make you bitter or better, stronger or weaker, uncertain or confident. Your level of self-confidence can show in many ways, especially during these difficult times. Your behavior, your body language, how you speak, and how you engage with others will signal to people whether you are confident or not. Confident people are generally more positive. You owe it to yourself and the people around you to be confident. Let me share with you some of the ways to be more confident during this demanding time. Get your happiness from within. Happiness is a critical element of confidence because in order to be confident in what you do, you have to be happy with who you are. People who brim with confidence derive their sense of pleasure and satisfaction from their own accomplishments, as opposed to what other people think of their accomplishments. They know that no matter what anyone says, you're never as good or bad as people say you are. Dabo Swinney, the head football coach at Clemson University, sums it up like this. "Life's problems come at you, and you've got one of two options: accept it or suck it up and change it. No matter the obstacles, you have to win inside before you ever try to win outside." Don't pass judgment. Confident people don't pass judgment on others because they know that everyone has something to offer, and they don't need to take other people down a notch in order to feel good about themselves. Comparing yourself to other people is limiting. Confident people don't waste time sizing people up and worrying about whether or not they measure up to everyone they meet. During this uncertain time, stay focused on improving yourself and not judging others. Only say yes when you really want to. Research conducted at the University of California in San Francisco shows that the more difficult you have saying no, the more likely you are to experience stress, burnout, and even depression. Confident people know that saying no is healthy and have the self-esteem to make their no's clearer. When it's time to say no, confident people avoid phrases like "I don't think I can" or "I'm not certain." They say no with confidence because they know that saying no to a new commitment honors their existing commitments and gives them the opportunity to fulfill them successfully. What you are going through right now is tough enough without adding any more stress to the situation. Learn to say no, but more importantly, only say yes when you really want to. If someone wants to go to a restaurant or public place and you don't feel comfortable, then say no. Listen more than you speak. People with confidence listen more than they speak because they don't feel like they have anything to prove. Confident people know that by actively listening and paying attention to others, they are much more likely to learn and grow. Instead of seeing interactions as opportunities to prove themselves to others, they focus on the interaction itself because they know this is a far more enjoyable and productive approach to people. Everyone has an opinion about this coronavirus, and it is just that, an opinion. Speak with certainty. It's rare to hear the truly confident utter phrases like "I'm not sure" and "I think." Confident people speak assertively because they know that it's difficult to get people to listen to you if you can't deliver your ideas with conviction. The best way to reassure people is to be confident about your beliefs and stay positive. Exercise, or at the very least, walk. A study conducted at Eastern Ontario Research Institute found that people who exercised twice a week for 10 weeks felt more competent socially, academically, and athletically. They also rated their body image and self-esteem as being higher. Best of all, physical changes in their bodies were not responsible for the uptick in confidence. It was the immediate endorphin-fueled positivity from exercise that made all the difference. Again, let me define exercise as walking. It all begins with the first step. Don't seek attention. People are turned off by those who are desperate for attention. Confident people know that being yourself is much more effective than trying to prove that you're important. People catch on to your attitude quickly and are more attracted to the right attitude than what or how many people you know. And confident people always seem to bring their right attitude. Confident people are masters of attention diffusion. When they're being given attention for an accomplishment, they quickly shift the focus to all the people who worked hard to get them there. They don't crave the approval of praise because they draw their self-worth from within. Don't be afraid to be wrong. Confident people aren't afraid to be proven wrong. You will learn a lot from the times you are wrong. Self-assured people know what they are capable of and don't treat being wrong as a personal slight. Celebrate other people. Insecure people constantly doubt their relevance, and because of this, they try to steal the spotlight and criticize others in order to prove their worth. Confident people, on the other hand, aren't worried about their relevance because they draw their self-worth from within. Instead of insecurely focusing inward, confident people focus outward, which allows them to see all of the wonderful things that other people bring to the table. Praising people for their contributions is a natural result of this. During this unprecedented time, celebrate people during your virtual meetings, social media posts, and take this opportunity to elevate other people. Don't be afraid to ask for help. Confident people know that asking other people for help won't make them seem weak or unintelligent. They know their strengths and weaknesses, and they look to others to fill the gaps. They also know that learning from someone with more expertise is a great way to improve. Focus on what you can control. Building confidence during this pandemic is a journey, not a destination. It is about focusing on what you can control and living in the moment, one day at a time. Trying to predict what will happen in two or three months will create uncertainty that is centered on worrying about the future and all the bad things you can anticipate happening. It can leave you feeling hopeless and depressed about the days ahead, exaggerate the scope of the problems you face, and even paralyze you from taking action to overcome a problem. I'm not trying to minimize what we're all going through. However, one of the best ways to avoid worrying about the future is to focus on the present. Instead of trying to predict what might happen, switch your attention to what's happening right now. By being fully connected to the present, you can interrupt the negative assumptions and catastrophic predictions running through your mind. Just as I suggested, change your preoccupation with future worries to a stronger appreciation of some of the positive things that you can reflect on. This will help calm your mind, ease stress, and boost your overall mood. Improve the situation. Don't make it worse. If you want to emerge confident, then protect your mental, emotional, and physical well-being by removing yourself from toxic people and circumstances. These uncertain and challenging times have created a whole new level of negativity that is not always so obvious. Because there is so much pessimism on the internet and television, we are all susceptible to being around people who don't represent our values and viewpoints. Right now is the time to surround yourself with a character of people that resembles who you want to be. Letting go of toxic people may not be easy because we all want to see the good in others, but only you know what's best for you. When you feel something isn't good or right, it usually isn't good or right. If you want to improve the situation, take a look at social media as an example. Before you say anything on social media, ask yourself three questions. Does this need to be said? Does this need to be said by me? Does this need to be said by me now? Additionally, before you speak, let your words pass through three gates. At the first gate, ask yourself, "Is it true?" At the second, ask, "Is it necessary?" And finally, at the third gate, ask, "Is it kind?" Confidence breeds strength. Never forget how far you've already come. Everything you have gotten through and all the times you pushed on, even when you felt you couldn't, all the mornings you got out of bed no matter how hard it was, all the times you wanted to give up, but you got through another day. Never forget how much strength you have learned and developed. Tony Dungy, former Super Bowl winning coach for the Indianapolis Colts, said, "You waste a lot of emotion and energy inventing or worrying about an injustice or something you can't do anything about." He was taught early in his football career with the Pittsburgh Steelers that when you are confident, strong, and disciplined, you spend your energy focused on what you can do to improve the situation, not make it worse. People have a distorted view of the world when they are in a negative state of mind. It becomes a cycle where negative thoughts reinforce negative emotions, which in turn produces negative actions. If the cycle is not broken and left to run uninterrupted, it inevitably has a detrimental physical and mental effect on the person experiencing the spin. In addition, if these cycles spin often enough, they can lead to clinical depression and anxiety. So how do you channel your energy in a better way to stop the cycle and improve the situation? Have you ever received an email that triggered negative emotions that turn into negative reactions? How about when you hear something destructive that was said about you by a person you trusted? How do you react when someone wrongs you? What is your response to an event that paralyzes your normal way of doing something? In every tough situation, no matter what the circumstances, ask yourself this question before you do anything. Is what I am about to say or do going to improve the situation? If it doesn't, don't say it, don't do it. Have you ever sent an email response that made it worse? Have you ever reacted to a Facebook post that spiraled out of control? Have you ever confronted a friend about a rumor that you knew wasn't true? Remember, is it true? Is it necessary? Is it kind? Confidence is something that happens within yourself, it or lack of it, can clearly be seen and felt by those around you. Take these challenging times to work on building your own confidence. Strive to be the best you can be in this situation. Your reactions will unequivocally impact the lives of others. What we all are experiencing can help us grow if we let it. Emerging confident requires that you encounter any negative thought with a relevant and equally powerful positive truth. Remember, a negative state of mind or distorted reality is not caused by a single incident or a single emotion. Your mindset is created by your honest overall outlook and your ability to consider all that is positive in your life. That positive view is what creates a confident mindset. As you emerge strong-minded, also challenge yourself to be determined. Determination is very important because it enables us to persist in the face of difficulties. It allows us to march fearlessly ahead with faith. Since life picks on everyone, and it isn't always smooth, determination will help you overcome any type of obstacle. Feel courageous and in control even when the world around us is out of control. Remind yourself of what you can control, and make a commitment not to surrender to the fear and the noise that a lot of people are experiencing right now. As I stated earlier, remember your why. It is tremendously helpful in those stressful moments when nothing seems to be working right, and you're tempted to retreat to where you started. Be strong because things will get better. Now is the time to learn from yesterday. Live for today and emerge determined tomorrow. But how, Steve? Make moments matter. You can either receive a moment or seize it. On the flip side, you can orchestrate a moment that will have an enduring impact, especially when you are facing challenges. Recognizing the accomplishment of a coworker Recognizing the accomplishment of a coworker, a conversation at dinner with your children, or sharing a cup of coffee with someone you have never sat down with and had a one-on-one conversation. During tough times, break the script. The most precious moments matter, and they're often the ones that cost the least. In June 2007, Darcy Daniels' three-year-old daughter Wendy came down with a stomach ache. A doctor in the rural Vermont town where they live discovered she had a severe E. coli infection, which triggered an escalating progression of health threats. Her kidneys failed and she spent weeks on dialysis. Horrible stomach aches led to a portion of her colon being removed twice. Infection from the repeated surgeries led to heart failure. She coded and had to be resuscitated. She desperately needed a kidney transplant, but none of the many people who volunteered were compatible. She spent Halloween in the hospital. Her costume was laid on top of her because she had too many tubes coming out of her body to put it on. Thanksgiving came and went. One day in December, not long before Christmas, began to snow outside. For a child from Vermont, it was cruel, having to watch the snow through the windows. Wendy loved to make snowmen and go sleigh riding. She hadn't been outside for months. Her lead nurse, Corey Fogarty, and patient care associate Jessica March hatched a plan. If Wendy couldn't play in the snow, they would bring the snow to her. But it was more complicated than that. Because of Wendy's heart condition, the staff was monitoring every milliliter of water that she consumed. So Jessica went and filled a bucket with snow, waited, let it melt, and then poured it into a graduated cylinder. Now they knew how to translate the weight of the snow into its volume of water. So they went and refilled the bucket with exactly the right amount of snow so that if Wendy ate it all, as three-year-olds are prone to do, she'd be just fine. When they brought the bowl of snow into Wendy's room, she lit up. Can you imagine? A child who has only seen the inside of a hospital room for months, who only knew the sound of the machines and the buzzers, the television, the whoosh of forced air, the plastic-covered hospital bed, and then receiving a bucket of snow, it was bliss. It was joy. She thought it was the best thing in the world. It reminded her of home. Wendy's long nightmare eventually ended. She received a successful kidney transplant and since then has grown into a healthy young woman. Wendy's mom, Darcy, wrote in a recent blog about the bucket of snow. She said, "It's easy to forget the monotony of the endless days that stretched together during her recovery, but that one moment of brightness, that is one moment we will never forget." That's what a defining moment looks like. A burst of magic, thoughtful, playful, and emotion that was conjured into reality by two caregivers who thought a sick girl deserved an escape. And that's the charge for all of us during this challenging and difficult time. To defy the flatness of working from home, the task of safely going to the grocery store, and the anxiety of returning to a normal way of life. I'm not suggesting that there is a quick fix to the course we are on. However, I am proposing that we look for ways to create some precious moments. Think about this in another way. What if every organization in the world offered new employees an unforgettable first-day experience? What if every student had an academic experience as memorable as the prom? What if every patient was asked, what matters to you? What if you called that old friend right now and finally mended that fence? What if we just didn't remember the defining moments of our lives, but made them? You can emerge more determined by designing moments to deliver elevation, insight, pride, and connection. Be determined to create positive moments. As a guest on a podcast, I was asked about emerging determined, and the question was, what makes a person more determined? How do you create determination? I said, eliminate the negatives and elevate the positives. Think about your current situation. What's the ratio of negative to positive? I also said that you have to break the script. Was there ever a better demarcation point between the old way and the new way? Trip over the truth. Ask tough questions and be honest about your answers. Stretch beyond the comfort zone. Place yourself in a new situation that exposes yourself to the risk of failure. Be the person who believes that stretching is not success, it's learning. Push to the finish line. Finish what you start before moving on to the next radical idea. I also believe that determined people don't give up on their goal regardless of how tough things get. This is not easy right now, but don't you dare give up on your goals and dreams. These two shall pass, and you can emerge stronger. Determined people don't let failure stop them. Understand that you may fail initially and frequently, but you will succeed eventually. Comebacks are only possible when there are setbacks. Determined people don't let what they don't know stop them. Be willing to grow. Ask lots of questions and be willing to fall on your face a few times until you achieve the outcome you desire. Determined people don't fear rejection. Be willing to ask lots of people lots of times until you get what they want. Determined people are not impulsive. Be patient and willing to wait for your opportunity to pounce. In today's society, we are all about wanting everything right now. I spoke in front of a live audience when I was 40 and wrote my first book when I was 44 years old. Determined people don't let limiting beliefs stop them from moving forward. Don't self-sabotage. Your attitude is where you will find a way through regardless of what happens. Get out of the way of yourself. Determined people don't shy away from adversity. If anything, you need to embrace this time. Let this time make you smarter and stronger. Determined people don't require the approval of others. Stop caring about what other people think. You don't require or need their approval. Determined people are not lazy. Just understand that you can't achieve a goal or a dream without a strong work ethic. You only need to work half-days. You just have to figure out which 12 hours you're going to work. And maybe the most significant way to emerge determined is to reconnect your meaning. Focus on what's important. Connecting to meaning. Reconnected people with the purpose of their efforts. That's motivating and encourages above and beyond work. But when we think about connecting to meaning or finding our why, the question I have in the midst of these uncertain times is, why did it take a pandemic to make us realize what's important? I ask that because if we are going to emerge grateful, confident, and determined, we need to remain focused on truly what is important. Niccolo Pegganini was a well-known 17th-century violinist. He was known for his great skill as a violinist and was helped by the fact that he had unusually long and flexible fingers in addition to great musicality. The story is told that one night while playing at a private concert event, he did something that became legendary. But before I tell the happenings of that evening, let me explain something about a violin. It is a four-stringed instrument, and the strings are hitched to tuning pegs and to a tailpiece passing over a bridge that is only held in place by the pressure of the strings. The story goes that during the concert, he was moving the bow so fast over the four strings that one broke. As it dangled, they say Pegganini looked up into the mezzanine without stopping the movement of his bow. He continued to play across the three remaining strings. After a couple of minutes, he was back to playing at the same speed as when he had all four strings. Moments later, it happened again. Because of the tension he was placing on the three strings, a second string snapped. This time, he looked into the mezzanine. He shut his eyes, but he never stopped moving the bow across the two remaining strings. He gained composure. He faced the audience and continued to play on two strings. Knowing the bridge was weakened, he played with less vigor. However, at the end of the piece, he took his bow from a downward position, and when he took it upward, a third string broke. Immediately, the bridge flew off. And as Pegganini bowed, the crowd stood and went wild. As they continued to applaud, Pegganini quietly walked over, picked up the bridge, returned to his chair, put the violin across his leg, and began to tighten the one remaining string. Once in place, raising the violin in one hand and the bow in the other, he said, "Please be seated. I have never given a concert without an encore, and tonight, this will be no exception." May I present to you Pegganini on one string? He played for a couple of minutes, a piece I'm sure didn't transmit an award-winning tone, but when he finished, they gave him his second standing ovation. Now, why do I tell you that story to end this presentation entitled "Emerge"? Because the key to emerging grateful, confident, and determined is in the story. During these challenging and difficult times, you have had some strings break. Your bridge has become vulnerable. Strings are going to continue to break, and people will continue to fan the flames of negativity, which will only cause more fear and anxiety. But the key to emerging grateful, confident, and more determined is not to focus on the strings that are breaking. You see, the strings that break will never stop you. It will be your inability to focus on what you have left to play. If we all focus on what we have left to play, the gratitude, confidence, and determination will make us smarter, stronger, and more focused. It's time for all of us to emerge strong-minded and to make this comeback greater than the setback.
Steve, that was awesome, and I'm sure everyone will agree that as we navigate through trying times, that being grateful, confident, and determined will allow us all to emerge better and stronger. Before I introduce our next presenter, we're going to take a short break. You'll notice a countdown clock on the screen, and as soon as it counts down to zero, we'll resume without delay of our program. resume without delay of our program. It's an honor to introduce our next presenter. Denise Barth is proprietor of Future Focus Consulting, LLC. She's an independent educational consultant who lives in Columbia. Denise graduated from the University of South Carolina with a BS in elementary education and a master's in educational administration. Denise's passion to create innovative instructional programs resulted in powerful school experiences and successes for the children in her classrooms and schools. Her 36-year career in public education included four middle schools, seven elementary schools, and two intermediate schools in two of the stellar South Carolina Midland School Districts. Known for student advocacy, her campuses housed magnet programs, special needs programs, and were nationally awarded professionally developed development schools for new teacher training. Denise was the 2017 South Carolina Elementary School Principal of the Year by South Carolina School Administrators Association and a 2017 National Distinguished Principal by the National Association of Elementary School Principals. Her areas of expertise include motivational speaking, leadership development, building positive school culture, curriculum design, technology integration, project-based learning, and movement in the classroom. Denise believes every child has gifts and strengths. A great education helps a child discover and develop these gifts and strengths to be successful in school and life. And now, let's welcome Denise to Risky Business 2020.
Good morning. I'm so happy to be here with you today, virtually, sort of. But as we think about this, one of the things that I did when I was preparing for this conference, I love the title. I pulled up the clips from the 1983 movie Risky Business. How perfect! A baby Tom Cruise slides through his parents' foyer, socks on his feet, tighty-whities under his button-down, and he is giddy at being left home alone for the weekend. That scene resonates with so many of us. And to think, he didn't TikTok it, FaceTime it, Snapchat it, or worry that someone else had without his knowledge. Life was easier in 1983 for all of us. All of us. You look at our children now. The things that compete for their attention, the balance that they have to hit, academics, extracurricular, competition in so many ways, social media, enough said. It's so much harder to be a kid now than it was when I was or when you were. I'm sure those were probably two different times also. But that scene, watching Tom Cruise with a Swanson frozen dinner, literally picking up the entree trapezoid, yeah, it was still frozen and it was that shape, and biting it, that crunch. That scene brought back so many memories just for me personally. My mother, teacher extraordinaire, was not a domestic goddess. I remember her glee when frozen dinners were invented. We had a freezer full. She was a single mom before that was a thing and the oven was not her bestie. But, but I digress. So, Tom Cruise, the high school senior, then grabs a brass candlestick from the table and starts busting a move to Bob Seger's old-time rock and roll. I mean, you remember it. Now, you'll have that in your tune all day. I had to smile. That's the joy we want all of our teenagers to have, a joy we hope all children have. But you and I know, childhood and teenage joy can sometimes be hard to find in our schools, even in our homes. As I talk to you today, I want to share some thoughts about this new normal that's not normal. As I prepared for today, a blogger from the National Association of Elementary School Principals wrote that "new normal" is inaccurate. It's abnormal. Call it what it is. Many of us remember the Addams Family. Such pearls of wisdom from Marticia. So, I'd like to talk a bit about the multitude of options our families and us face. I'll share the occasional sanity saver that may be helpful. I'll talk about some of the lesser-known options many of us only have a fleeting knowledge of. At least, that was my situation during my 36-year career in public education. I didn't know those other options. I wouldn't be a principal if I didn't toss in some of the tried and true adages and, you know, a favorite quote or two. I'll make time for questions and answers near the end. In closing, I have one of my favorite things I'll share. But I want you to know, much of what I'm putting in front of you, even I discovered as I prepared for today. And truly, you can get lost when you Google something unless you drop some digital breadcrumbs to get you back out of the online forest. And we wonder why this is hard for children, virtually or some form of it? My goal in presenting was best stated by FDR. So, when last March rolled in and everybody went home, so many of us found ourselves in the position of both professional and teacher. And that was only two of the hats we were wearing. In this audience today, I have board members, superintendents, building and program managers, operations managers, finance executives, school administrators. But I also have moms, dads, nana and poppy, aunts, uncles, neighbors, community members, who each have a child or more likely children they spend time with frequently, if not daily. Those roles, mom, dad, auntie, are the other hats we wear joyfully, but we wear them. It seems almost surreal looking back. The first week in March in 2020, I was in Florida to meet my significant other's mother. Yep, Florida, teeming COVID hotbed to be. Two weeks later, the world closed down. Children left school on Friday, not knowing that was the last day of the school year. Neither did anyone else. We'll be closed two weeks, changed to, to the end of April, and then the announcement, school would not reopen. I wasn't a principal then, so I don't know what teachers knew, but my gut tells me they knew not much more than any of the rest of us. Just like that, toilet paper became a thing. Planes landed, cruise ships became stranded, and desperate healthcare workers nationwide begged for sufficient protection to do their jobs. Fast forward through mixed messages, masked misconduct, talk TV from celebrities' family rooms. We never thought we'd see these things. Skip through food supply issues, bare grocery shelves and freezers, and no fast food. No sit-down restaurants. Talk about rocking a child's world and ours, you know, if we're truthful. I don't, I don't cook. Then the parks closed, playgrounds closed, the beaches closed, lake access and boat launches closed. All just about the time, parents figured they could teach from anywhere and decided they could take their children on field trips. Not. Picture the stuttering internet connections as the entire world gobbled up bandwidth, Netflix binging and working and schooling from home. And at home, everyone adjusted to virtual schooling. Schools and districts worked tirelessly to remove the advantage gap found in most communities. Everyone knew it wasn't a level playing field for all students, but everybody has done the very best they can. For some children, it works and for some it doesn't. And then, there's that whole range in between. For so many children, school is their safe place. But I'm preaching to the choir. I was a principal for 17 years and one of the things that I loved about being a principal was And one of the things that I loved about being a principal was knowing that every child had gifts and strengths. And those gifts and strengths were just as individual as that child was. I believe you teach to those gifts and strengths. We, we all have weaknesses. But truly, do adults pick a profession because they're bad at it? No. We do something that we're good with, that we enjoy, that we love. We play to our gifts and strengths. As a principal, that's what we did in our schools. We played to those gifts and strengths. I would laugh because teachers also came with gifts and strengths, and they were just as individual as those children. I remember each summer, parents would write teacher request letters. I know you've heard of them. I'll bet some of you even wrote one or two, or you know someone who did. In their infinite wisdom fueled by the network, you know, soccer sidelines, the deck of the community pool, parents' conversations would inevitably turn to teachers in your school and which ones each thought were the very best and why. Every parent wants the very best for their child, and they should. So parents would write these passionate letters, you know, the right kind of passion. You know, "We have to have Ms. Smith for Perfect Precious." "Ms. Smith is the only one that will work for us, and here is why." And then the paragraphs went on. After reading the parent letter, I would pick up the phone. I never trusted email for this. I couldn't risk being misunderstood and having my message read with tone that I neither had nor intended. I would call the parent and I'd say, "Please tell me about your child's temperament. Tell me your child's gifts and strengths. You are the expert for your child." After they shared, and I took notes, then came the hard part, the tough delivery. I would tell them, "Just like you know your child well, I know our teachers well. Together, we're going to find the right match. But you have to trust me. I'll always know things about teachers you're not going to know. And you'll always know things about your child that I won't know. But if you describe your child well enough to me, I will absolutely do my best to find that teacher that will make every day in school a wonderful place for your child." That's how we did it. That's how I did it. The letters never failed to be entertaining and informative. And every now and then, I had to fall back on my last resort, you know, when parents were even more convinced that they had to have a certain teacher. I would say, "You do understand there's no guarantee that teacher will be here next year. And there's no guarantee that teacher, even if they're here, will be at that grade level. If you don't help me know your child, I have no way of knowing what your child needs. So every day has the best possible outcome." Oh yeah, good times. Every summer, political minefield. Great memories. Today, though, I want to share with you some of the truths that we can often forget when life is too close to us. And boy, oh boy, when the world closed down, everything got very close, in good ways, most of the time. Knowing our children better than anyone else knows them is something we should never take for granted. But as children came home for virtual school in March, in many homes, many homes, many of us were reminded why we didn't go into teaching in the first place. I know when my own child, who's now 22, was very young. He was a student in my school. It never failed to astonish me. I could get an entire school of 800 children to do exactly what I needed. You guessed it, except for my own personal child. And y'all, I was a great teacher. I was a great principal. But he did what his teacher told him, just not me. Spirited, spirited, was the way I always described, not only him, but those children who have that strong will. That strong will is a blessing when it's not in direct opposition to you. Don't ever be fooled. That strong will is a blessing. It'll be a gift when they're older. But especially as we came home to slow COVID-19 down and began virtual school, many of us very quickly learned why teachers are so vital and magical at what they do and how they do it. As a principal, I would often sit in a parent conference. You've been there. We would be talking about the amazing and wonderful things the child was doing, and this is honest conversation. And the parent would turn and look at me and say, "You're talking about my child?" Sincerely, with the expression. I'd laugh and I'd say, "Well, you know, they use up all their good while they're at school. But then they come home to you." Something we all need to remember. Children are always going to push their limits more with their parents, their trusted, loved adults than with anybody else. You're the ones they feel safest with. You're the ones they test all those newly emerging interpersonal skills on because they feel safe. So this is what we discovered as we began this virtual schooling. And every parent I know scrambled to figure out, "How am I going to work and teach, even though supposedly the children are going to need us to do that? How am I going to convince my child to do what they need to do?" Our children will argue with us in a heartbeat if something like schoolwork, housework, chores, is unattractive. Again, they feel safest with us. Thus, the pushback. Let the negotiations begin. And I don't mean that in a good way. Parents found some of their best leverage was gone, baby, gone. Fast food, outings, trips to the store to get their favorite video game. Just fill in the blank. It's a delicate balance. We're our own worst enemy, and we are so critical of ourselves when we really don't need to be. You know, children don't have to be happy all the time. And as a parent, if they are, you might want to examine it. Today, I want to share some tips and some tricks. Whether your child is in school face-to-face or hybrid, a piece of the week at school, piece of the week at home, or totally virtual school as opposed to real virtual school offered by your district or the state. There's every permutation you could want to find right now. Again, I'm certain there are even more variations I've not listed. Ultimately, what really matters is, is what you're doing working for your child? Or do you feel like you are in 7th grade, 10th grade, kindergarten, all over again? Anne Landers said it best. Most of us would agree. Time is the most valuable gift we have. Our children crave, crave our time, our attention, and they will take that attention any way they can get it, positive or negative. You want to use your attention in a way that reinforces only the actions and behavior you want them to repeat. It's hard. But a lot of times, especially now, the best thing we can do is ignore behaviors unless they're dangerous. Ignore them. Just remind yourself, it is pretty likely that everyone else in the Zoom meeting has also entered United Nations-level negotiations to keep their children from interrupting. You do not need to be in negotiations with your child. Once you've done it, it's a hard habit to break. But I'm speaking from years. You can break it. You need to move away from rewards and punishments. Our children are smart enough to decide if the reward is worth it. We ask our children too many questions. Truly, we, we, big people, we talk too much. Teachers will tell you, short, direct statements, less words, that don't end with "okay" and that upward inflected voice. "I need you to clean up your room, okay?" "No, no, 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 no." "I have a meeting. Stay off the camera view." This works when you establish in advance what they can do, can eat, and should interrupt you for. Do not promise what they get if they comply. I do love my air quotes. Assume compliance, step one. You're the big person. You're the parent. Try this. Email the people with whom you work. Chances are, everyone is in the same boat. Having a sense of humor with coworkers, really with everyone, will stand us all in good stead. Let them know you plan to ignore your child unless it's life or death in the hope your child can be taught not to interrupt because it gets no attention, positive or negative. None, not from you, and not from the people on the other side of the screen. Attention's what they crave. Have you ever noticed when you have more than one child? They can play just fine. Unless you're within hearing distance, then chaos and bedlam ensue. It's a surefire way to get your attention, the most valuable thing they have. Unless there's blood or a real injury, and I don't mean that really sarcastically, but unless there's blood, send each child to their room or to opposite ends of the house without discussing what happened or why. Don't create little lawyers here. Send them. They lose all attention and a playmate. If you do this consistently, they will begin to solve their own problems because they don't want their play to stop, and they're not going to get any attention when bedlam ensues. It seems like we're in a time when there really are more questions than answers. Even with the news, we have to take everything that is said with a grain of salt. We get conflicting information about masks, conflicting information about the longevity of the coronavirus on surfaces. You name it, you've probably gotten conflicting information about it. The life lessons our children are learning as they watch us are the most vital we could give them. Our children see how we absorb and process information, good and bad, how we keep things in balance. Try to keep things in balance. These are the things that we're teaching, whether or not we consciously realize it. And they're the vital skills that children need to have. When we look at the profile of the SC graduate, we see the core academics are listed, but they're really only 1/3 of what's on that profile. So many of the other characteristics that are vital for the success of our children come under world-class skills. Things like creativity and innovation, critical thinking and problem-solving, collaboration and teamwork, communication, information and media and technology, and knowing how to learn. What have we been doing for the last few months? The life and career characteristics include integrity, self-direction, global perspective, perseverance, work ethic, and interpersonal skills. These are the skills and characteristics that are the hardest to teach. Because of standardized testing, they're the hardest to measure. But parents, give yourself credit. You've been teaching and modeling those every day, day in and day out. Especially since COVID-19 has been such a prominent force in the world. It's beyond our control. So our children get to see how we adjust to that lack of control. They see us focus on the things we can control. I'll say it again. These behaviors and practices they've been watching really are vital skills. As I've listened to parents since this all began, they're so critical of themselves, and they shouldn't be. They're doing exactly what they should be, and they're doing the best they can. So are the teachers. Aren't we all? But there's an elephant in the room. Some of us, despite all of our advantages, know or have a child who is not okay right now. They may have been making it when everything was normal, but COVID-19 and stay-at-home tilted the scale too far, and they are falling and failing in both visible and invisible ways. The degree to which this is happening varies. But it's not unusual to have a home in complete disarray and conflict as a child begins to malfunction. Frequently, there's no indication from the outside looking in. That's why we find that there are more families than we have previously realized with these struggles. So what if we have a child going into the school year that's not being successful? You're in a wonderful school. You have a marvelous teacher who's well-suited for your child in part due to your copious letter-writing last summer. You have an administration that understands what's important. All of those things can be right, and it'd still be wrong for your child in the new normal. He's not the spider, he's the fly. Many of us last spring might have had a child that was okay, but it was marginal. The longer we stayed home, the longer we did virtual school, the longer we juggled, the more we saw our child's anxiety increase, frustration increase, school reluctance, or just flat refusal increase. There comes a point when, as a parent, we have to stand back, be honest with ourselves. Something is not working, and my child is not okay. And we have to remember, this is no reflection on our parenting. You can't be the ostrich with your head in the sand. So let's come back to what we said at the beginning. Time is the most valuable gift we have. We want to make sure we're investing it well. We want the same for our children. Their time matters too. Yes, children are resilient, but let's do our best. So at this point, you begin to ask yourself, "Well, if not this, then what? If we're in regular school, pick your delivery method, virtual, hybrid, face-to-face, and I'm already struggling to get my child to do the work they need to do? How is that going to be any different if I switch the delivery method? Same show, different channel." There are times when many of us as families are having to ask questions and look for information that we're just not familiar with. Most of us know public school. When I retired, I discovered there was an incredibly complex and specialized world running parallel to what we do. The schools and programs are as varied as our children's needs. I already knew several very good private schools in my area. I was to find out my limited knowledge was just the tip of the iceberg. This leads me to the second key part of this presentation, and that is to share a brief glimpse of the additional educational options that are not the public school system, something I had little knowledge of for most of my career. I'll admit, I had a personal moment of shoulda, woulda, coulda as I thought about my own son and his unenthusiastic response to school for most of his academic career. Yet, he wasn't unsuccessful based on the usual measuring sticks, grades, standardized tests. And our home wife survived homework and projects basically okay, but the shoemaker's child had no shoes. You don't know what you don't know. We've heard that expression so many times. It probably came from this quote. But truly, how do you find out if you don't even know to ask the questions? Or you don't know which questions to ask? We've talked about some of the challenges that we face and that our children face, and we've done it in the realm of public education. This is where my experience was. This is where my joy was. I always said I had the best job in the world being a school principal. Of course, when I was a teacher, I said I had the best job in the world then too. That joy and being able to do those things every day with children, amazing. It was a gift I was given. But what if your child is not successful right now? What if you're seeing the increased frustration? What if home feels like a battleground? It's not uncommon, but those aren't the things we post on social media, at least not the people that I follow. Very quickly, I realized there was an incredible depth and breadth of opportunities for children, just as varied and unique as our children are. You know I said when I started, every child has gifts and strengths. Our best gift to them is to teach them through those gifts and strengths. In many cases, we need to help them recognize they have them, because children can be their own worst enemy too. After I retired, I learned about the world of independent educational consultants, IECs, and how they help navigate the path with families to help children maximize their potential. We all know there's nothing easy about parenting. There was no manual provided. If there were, somebody would be making a lot of money. I jokingly have said, wow, I would love to write that manual. But ultimately, each of us has to craft the parenting manual for our own children. However, an independent educational consultant could well be the ghostwriter by your side. So how do you know if it's really difficult for your child to continue in the educational setting they're in? Well, ask some questions. Do you see your child have a real hard time starting a project or doing homework? Do you see your child having a hard time transitioning, going from one thing to another? And that's not always schoolwork, friends, that's life. Is it difficult for them to focus? Can they stay on something for 30 minutes? If they're middle school, high school, I mean, that depends on the age. But if your child is third grader or under, can they maintain that focus for 15 minutes? And forget the acronym soup, ADD, ADHD. They matter, they are real, but just think about your child. Can they self-regulate? Can they go through an evening without getting angry or being inattentive or complaining so much? So much that it's worrisome. It may not be every day, but I think for many families, especially since last spring, it can be because all of our habits, all of our patterns, all of our routines blew up, and we had to find the new normal. Certainly, we can't be accused of being unimaginative. When I began this presentation, I talked about Risky Business, the movie, 1983. Tom Cruise was a senior in high school, and how the forces on adolescents at that point were still a challenge. It's never been easy to be a teenager, but how less complicated it was then than it is now. Boy, am I glad there wasn't Facebook when I was in school. When we look at the statistics, you can pick and choose your numbers, but what really matters is your own individual child, the number one. When we looked at the statistics as a nation, the number of things that our boys and girls struggle with, self-image, school anxiety, substance abuse, addictions, including internet and gaming, those are addictions too. And yet, we sent all the children home and expected them to manage their life and education on a computer, and they're gaming addicted. That's ironic. I think back to some of the schools I was in previously, and in those schools, one in 10 children, one in 10, had some sort of school anxiety to the point where they were medicated. And I'm talking fifth grade, sixth grade. The opioid crisis is something so many people don't talk about, but it's mushrooming out of control in many communities, and especially in high-stress competitive school communities. Vaping, vaping, oh my heavens. The number of ways that vaping can be concealed? The entire industry developed devices that made it attractive for our children and concealed its addictive nature. It's now recognized as a gateway habit, and we see middle schoolers with easy access and escalating use. So what if you're looking at your child and you're thinking, something's off? What do you do next? And lots of things you could do. Talk to your child's doctor. If you're already involved with a therapist of some kind, involve the therapist in those conversations. But ultimately, that gift of time, that most precious gift you have, you have to decide if there's something that your child needs you to help them redirect and get a handle on or get control over. You're the parent, you're not the friend, you never were, and you shouldn't be. Typically, a child in crisis is also in denial. So asking that child if they want a different school setting is typically not your A move. Be the adult, make the decision, and inform them. That actually ultimately makes them more secure. You may find that it helps at that point to involve an independent education consultant, an IEC. They can help navigate the multitude of options to maximize your child's personal and academic life and potential. So as I prepared, I spent a few minutes just searching, just that quick click to see what happens if I looked for private schools. Well, the first thing I noticed, all the private schools that I knew didn't necessarily even show up in the search, and they're great schools. Huh, what happened here? So I tried another search, boarding schools. Again, I saw schools pop up, but I also knew of so many schools that weren't even listed, nowhere. Scroll, scroll, page, page. Wilderness programs, what an amazing service these provide, and yet, most of us don't even know about them. We have some fuzzy picture on our head, we see ropes in the sky. But that fuzzy picture may not be the reality. For so many who are struggling with lack of regulation, the inability to self-regulate, an addiction, or other issues, a wilderness camp may be that first step for reset. At wilderness, everything centers in, and all the distractions are removed. The guidance there is licensed, experienced, and focused on what each individual needs while in that wilderness setting. Well then, what about therapeutic boarding schools? Well, they provide academics and all the wraparound support that a student needs for all of the other life functions. So I put in a search for therapeutic boarding schools, and what comes up? Well, a lot came up, but is it all of them? No. Search engines are great, but you know what Googling is and what it isn't. Ads come up first. Enough said. So what is the best use of your time when you think about all these different program options? Having an independent educational consultant to navigate and curate makes a huge difference. I would guess many of us didn't know this help was available. I didn't know it when my son was in high school, so now you know. There are options, public and private. Now, I did say at the beginning, I'd pause for a minute and answer some questions. Not a lot, but again, people have sent these in, let's, let's take a second. Okay, so what is a residential treatment center? Again, this was a term I didn't know either until I started looking. An RTC, a residential treatment center, is a place where the students live on-site. It's a non-hospital setting, but it has 24/7 support and 24/7 supervision. There's usually a really low staff-to-client ratio, small numbers. So even with a residential treatment center, there are variations in that. There are locked RTCs, which do exactly as they say, think of that safety. There are unlocked RTCs, and there are long-term versus short-term RTCs. Again, you know, you find there's many possibilities as there are individual needs in our students. There are those options. And especially in some cases, when there's been an episode in your home, a psychotic event, a suicide attempt, and we know suicide numbers are rising, and it's so scary, and we don't know what's happening or coming. But if there's been one of those, a residential treatment center may be that next step after a hospitalization, because that hospitalization did the assessment. They have to make sure that the person is safe and secure before you move. Okay, let me see this. Okay, another question. So what is a therapeutic boarding school? Okay, as opposed to the residential center? That therapeutic boarding school is one step down from a residential treatment center. Therapeutic boarding schools come in all styles, all sizes, for most ages, as young as middle school, and all the way through young adulthood, think past college even. It's a unique approach. Many times, we find that any of the other conditions that have caused difficulty for our children have also resulted in some academic difficulty. A therapeutic boarding school is going to look at both sets of needs. There are lots of different models they use at therapeutic boarding schools. You may recognize some, you may have heard cognitive behavioral or a dialectical behavioral model, experiential crisis management, narcotics or Alcoholics Anonymous, addiction or substance abuse counseling. And again, that list goes on and on. Art therapy, equine psychotherapy, both ways to include animals and other avenues to help our students re-center and build strength. Okay, so, so how do you know if your child needs a therapeutic boarding school program? Well, on a lot of the websites, you can find lists of questions you want to ask yourself, but here's some quickies. Is your child having academic struggles? Is attendance an issue? Will they even go? Are their grades slipping? Are they acting out? Do they have behavior disorders such as oppositional defiance disorder, ODD, or a conduct disorder? Is there substance abuse? Are there anger issues? Depression? Is there minor criminal behavior like shoplifting? Or an expulsion from school? It could be other things, lying or deception, chronic. And again, we know that with each of these, there's that sliding scale, you know, liar, deception, but you know, we all tell white lies. You know, I weigh 120. But being honest and looking with a clear eye at your own child is the best gift you can give them. Okay, I could answer more questions, but I want to be true to my opening FDR quote. Let me take a minute and come back to another really critical area I hope that we're addressing, considering especially the audience I have in front of me. Social emotional learning. It's not that core academics, decision-making and self-regulation. And why are these skills important? So look at our children and their world, and all the advertisements that are out there. They're bombarded every day, no matter which direction they turn. Hmm, 1983, it was easier when Tom Cruise was a high schooler, but even he referred to his challenge and his fear of not getting into the right college. He had a nightmare about standardized testing. Now, it did start with a nude woman in a shower, but it ended with a testing center that he was late for. Depending on which social emotional learning program you look at, they categorize it in lots of different ways. Our best teaching this spring from our parents was social emotional growth through the very things they did, the very actions they modeled. But those social emotional learning skills our students have to have to be successful now, and especially in later life, our children were getting those skills all spring from their first and most important teacher, their parents. So what are these skills? You know what, you keep saying SEL, social emotional learning. We looked at the profile of the graduate, but here's just one model. The skills have to do with self-awareness of knowing themselves, knowing their own emotions, self-managing, being able to regulate their thoughts, their emotions, their actions, being able to work towards goals. Another skill would be social awareness, knowing their perspective and empathizing with others. Remembering empathy is not sympathy. Those, those are really two very different things. Relationship skills fit under social emotional learning. How do we get along with others? How do we communicate clearly, listen well, cooperate, and avoid peer pressure? That's a biggie. It's so much worse than what we had when we were young. Decision-making. How do we teach children to sift through all those choices about their own behavior and social interactions, and make sure that they consider safety and social norms and ethical standards with everything that comes in front of them? You know these social emotional skills. We model those at home, we might not have labeled them. In great schools, teachers incorporate them, sometimes in a very structured program, sometimes in a morning meeting and a set of classroom norms and practices that have proven to help children see and make those connections, and most importantly, internalize those skills for themselves. But my fear, dear audience, is that when we came back to school, whatever version of school we came back to, this fall, the concern about academics created pressure to focus on the content, the math, the science, the social studies, the language arts, the types of skills that are more easily measured by a test. Without taking time to help our children really process what already happened and what's still going on in the world, and in their small world, their medium school-sized world, and their community-sized world, they're being bombarded with information. How do we help them interpret these things? Many of us are familiar with Maslow's hierarchy. It's so fundamental to what we do in education. We know that our children have to have that safety, security, food, warmth, shelter, before they can even begin to move up to higher-level skills that enable the academic and cognitive growth. But we came right back to school and hit academics after last spring and this summer. A question, food for thought. Are we devoting the time this new school year to prioritize social emotional learning for our children? Think about it, and if you're a decision-maker, help with it. I'd like to close with a book that guided the culture of every school I led. I believe these wishes have value for all of us. It's funny, you know, I've done lots of presentations, and anyone who's known me for any length of time knows how much I adore picture books, adore. I used a picture book every year I was a principal, every year, to communicate the things I valued most, to set the culture more firmly. I read it aloud the very first day the teachers returned to school. Then every teacher got a copy. Every teacher read the book to their class on the student's first day of school. Our faculty signed a copy to our superintendent. We shared our vision. And over 17 years of the principalship, I built a library that encompassed the values and beliefs that made our schools the amazing places they were for everyone who walked through the doors. This book is one of my all-time favorites. I read it to the parents at Open House more times than I can count. I think it more cleanly tells what matters really most for each of us and for our children than any list of objectives on a standards document. These things are the things that really matter. This is the lifelong learning we can grow from. I hope you agree. I hope you agree. Now more than ever, we need to be centered, have our priorities straight, and feel supported as we make difficult decisions and balance competing interests. So allow me to share, Wishes For You by Toby Tobias. Beautiful illustrations. I hope you will have moments when you're so happy, you will feel the sun is shining from inside you. I hope you will have the strength and spirit to deal with bad things when they come your I hope you will be lucky, just lucky. I hope you will always be curious. I hope you will never forget how to be silly. I didn't. And they let me run a school. I hope you and I will have adventures together, just the two of us. I hope you will love to read, love to read. I hope you will learn how to make things with your own hands. I hope you will want to make your body strong and quick and beautiful and enjoy the way that feels. I hope you will love one special person more than anyone or anything in the whole I hope that one day when you're grown up, you will have a child different from you, but just as wonderful. That's not how my mother said it. Did your mother say it that way? Just like you. I hope you will love being alone sometimes. I hope you will know what you think and feel and not let other people tell you. I hope you will be able to tell your favorite people the secrets of your heart. I hope you will always be part of a family. There's so many ways to define that. What a wonderful world we live in. I hope you will always remember me and know how much I love you. As a message that I share with teachers and as core living, these are the things that really matter, not measured on a test, but they would ensure success for any of us if we embed them and live them. It's not a new normal. It just is. And these too are my wishes for you. Thank you so much for being here today.
Amazing Denise, and thank you for your insights. And now, time for a brief bio break. We'll be back in a few minutes with one of Skysbit's partners, Stop It Solutions. Back in a jiff. Welcome back, and I'm honored to introduce our next presenter with a powerful message that is so timely. Jose Abreu with Stop It Solutions has partnered with Skysbit to produce our member districts with a proven tool that deters inappropriate behavior through an anonymous web-based reporting system. Jose graduated from Rutgers University with a degree in computer science, is married with two sons, and is a resident of New Jersey. He is considering a move to South Carolina. So let's welcome Jose, not only as our next speaker with an important message, but as a future resident. Ladies and gentlemen, Jose Abreu.
Good morning, members of the South Carolina School Board Association. Thank you for joining me today to learn more about Stop It Solutions. Today, I'll go into who we are and how we create safer and healthier places to learn, work, and live. Towards the end, we will have a Q and A section. Now, keep in mind that this is pre-recorded, so technically I'm live in the chat as I speak. So during the presentation, if you do have any questions, please feel free to type them into the chat box and I will make sure to get you an answer. So without further ado, let's get started. Now, we start off with the purpose, and today you will learn about Stop It Solutions and how the services we provide are making districts in your communities and the nation safer and more connected. The situation that we face is the ongoing crisis of COVID-19 and the new virtual hybrid reality facing many schools nationwide, which is causing mental health and safety concerns to reach an all-time high. The solution is within this type of partnership, partnering with South Carolina schools to provide an AR solution, an anonymous reporting solution, where your students, staff, and admins can report concerns. Now, the opportunity today is to learn about the K-212 program and the specifics of our anonymous reporting solution and additional services available to your schools today. Now, who is Stop It Solutions? We are the leading provider of mobile safety solutions and programs focused on mental health and well-being. We empower organizations with comprehensive and complementary safety technologies and compliant solutions that help create inclusive, connected, healthy learning and working cultures while minimizing overall risk. Now, today, we service over 6,000 K-212 schools nationwide, and that number grows every day. Getting back into the situation and why we do what we do, the statistics are alarming. Some of the most alarming is that every seven minutes, a student is bullied. Out of that group of students, 86% are led to school violence as a solution. The most alarming? Suicide is the second highest cause of death for youth and young adults, and in the last 40 years, we've had over 1,300 school shootings. Now, here's something even more eye-opening. 85% of incidents are witnessed by another student, one of their peers. But only 20 to 30% of them say something to an admin or a teacher for no other reason than simply not having a way to do so. That fear that other students or even their friends found out it was them that said something, of being singled out, of being labeled or tattletaled or snitched, that is the fear On top of these challenges, we are now living through a global pandemic, creating a whole new set of problems for us to deal with. Since the onset of COVID-19, we've seen 120% increase in the number of violent/life-threatening An incident that is an immediate threat of bodily harm to oneself or others. We've also seen a major increase in cyberbullying, sexual abuse, and drug use and vaping. So how do you stop and get help for individuals displaying violent, unsafe, or unhealthy behaviors before they escalate into a crisis, while also addressing mental health and well-being through upstream education and practices? Now, this leads us into what we do. Our anonymous reporting system will allow your students various ways to communicate with the admins and counselors at the school anonymously, removing the fear of retribution and building confidence. They will be able to download the mobile app and have access directly to their cellphones. They'll have the web link, which mirrors the look and feel of the mobile app for those students that may not have a mobile device. And they'll also have the reporting hotline where they can call in to make the report. Our admin incident management system is your admin console, where you'll have access to tools, reports, and customization features. This is where you'll manage your incidents and conduct your investigations. Now, the Incident Monitoring Center is operated 24/7/365 by certified agents who will monitor and escalate any incident of emergency status, as well as make you aware of any incidents of high priority. Now, our SEL Center offers professionally-developed content for students and staff, ranging over 12 categories and 96 different topics, allowing you to quickly and easily provide help to a student in need, whether it be dealing with anxiety, depression, or even suicidal ideation. For staff, the content is tailored in a way that will allow that admin or counselor to help that student better understand what it is they're feeling. Now, I want to show you how this works, and it is as easy as 1, 2, 3. Step 1 is to report an incident. That student will be able to type in a simple message, attach any evidence or useful information, such as a picture, a screenshot, or a video. Over time, this will encourage students to become upstandards versus being bystanders, and when they see something that makes them uncomfortable, to say something. Step 2 is to monitor and identify. This is where the IMC steps in. They will escalate emergencies to member contacts or first responders if needed. They will highlight concerns of non-emergencies yet high-priority reports, and you can expect always on-monitoring 24/7/365. Now, step 3 is managing resolve for the school team. Now, it is important to mention that there is no delay or lag when receiving incidents. You will receive the incidents at the same time as the IMC. They are there to notify you of those emergencies or non-emergency high-priority incidents, offering you peace of mind that no incident will go unseen, no matter what time of day it may be. Now, what can you expect from us? During key delivery, startup, and support, we will provide you with a launch kit, which includes many we will provide you with a launch kit, which includes many pieces of content that you could use and edit to your liking to introduce this not only to your students, but your staff and your parents. We will provide ongoing training webinars, which you can join live or request a recording and watch at your convenience. Within your admin console, you'll have useful links to resources, either internally or externally. Full customization over the platform itself, really making it your own. And of course, you will always have 24/7 customer support. Now, here are some additional app capabilities. Get Help Resources will allow your students and staff quick and easy access to resources either internally or externally. This is fully customizable at any time to best suit the needs of the students and the school. Broadcast notifications is your mass communication tool. You will have the power to send a video, a typed message, a photo, or a web link to your entire school with a click of a button. Notifications can be anything you want them to be: a positive message, a safety concern or emergency. It can be to inform the student body of inappropriate behaviors or very specific to an incident that may have happened. Now, the questions within the incident report are fully customizable. You can have as many or as few as you like, even making them required or optional is up to you. You'll be able to take advantage of our intelligent incident routing, making sure that the correct admin gets the incidents within their warehouse, making your day-to-day a lot more efficient. Now, here's an additional Stop It service. We provide assemblies on cybersecurity for students by grade level, as well as for parents, admin, and staff. These assemblies can also be done virtually and are created in a way to encourage engagement and participation. This is a great way for a school or a district that may see trends in their reporting to proactively get ahead of a situation before it becomes a problem. So before you go, let me go over some of the common questions we receive. False reporting. Now, there is no standard across the board. Every school and environment is different. What we can see and could expect is around 6% to 10%. To give an example, if you receive 100 reports in a given school year, you can expect 6 to 10 of them to be false or unsubstantiated. What I'd like to focus on, though, here is the 90 to 94 reports that came in from real students that are trying to reach you and make you aware of something that is going on. Now, truly anonymous in security? I'll answer these both together. We are truly anonymous. Our servers are cleared every 24 hours of any identifiable information. We host on Amazon Web and Cloud Services with the highest level of security available, above and beyond standard security practice and recommendations. Now, as it pertains to administration time, you can expect to spend less time than before. You will be notified of any incident that comes in, so there is no need for you to check your console constantly to see if there's any new reports. When you do receive a report, you have access via your admin mobile app and can address that incident, that report, on the go without having to go to your office or find a computer. Now, district-wide launch process is quick and easy. We are well-equipped with very large districts of over 30,000 students. We can have you set up and ready to go, your admin account in as little as 20 minutes. Now, our customer success team will strategize with you on how to launch, and they will also share best practices with you from school districts across the country. Now, as it pertains to too many reports, when you first launch our program, you will experience a phenomenon called pent-up demand. This will be coming from students that have always had something to say, but never had a way to say it. During the first 60 to 90 days of launch, you will learn things about your school and students that you never knew before, which will give you the power and information that you need to provide change. As a member of Schizbit, you should have already received communication that this is available to you. We also, on a regular basis, reach out once we get the green light to reach out to the members, and we send out email campaigns letting them know that this is available to them and to reach out to us to schedule a demonstration or a phone call so we could discuss the details of your specific environment. So to answer that, that would be falling under the realm of false reporting/unsubstantiated. And when you receive reports like that, the reality is that we don't know if it's true or not. We don't know if Johnny has a gun in his backpack. To be on the safe side, we're going to check Johnny's backpack. But the benefit is that there are fail-safes within the anonymous reporting system that will allow you to see who it was that made that report, previous reports that they've sent out in the past, so that you would be able to see as an administrator, is this student abusing the system? Now, if you deem, and you've come to the conclusion that yes, this student is abusing the system, you, as an administrator, have the ability to deactivate that user from using it going forward. It may be a probationary period. It may be indefinitely. It's really up to you and your policy, but you do have the ability to alleviate that problem in the future if it does occur. Now, to give you more context, in the seven years that we've been working and doing this with schools and helping, we haven't had too many issues of high false reporting accusations or serious problems that come forward. And we're talking about seven years and thousands and thousands of schools, hundreds of thousands of students. So rest assured there that that's not something that's typical, but if it does happen, there are fail-safes within the system to alleviate that. Okay, that's a very good question. Now, some of the best practices that we see and with the program that works the best is setting the expectation early and often. Right at the beginning of the launch with the launch kit, we do provide you with a lot of content that you will use and can customize to set that expectation. Again, not only for your students, for your teachers, but also for your parents. Once you set that expectation, and these students, these parents, these teachers understand what the use of this is, besides that is making sure that you understand who's responsible for what on the administration team. If it's a one-person team, it makes it a lot easier. If there are multiple administrators on the team, taking advantage of that smart routing features is going to make your day a lot easier. Automatically sending incidents to those that are responsible for those type of incidents, have them work on it immediately, is just a more efficient way to do it. And like I said, on an ongoing basis, just making sure that you reaffirm the program, you reintroduce it to the students, you let them know, tell them some good stories of things that have happened, right? But the benefit that you will have as a client of ours is that once you meet our customer success team, we will share those best practices, and we will strategize with you on what other schools across the country are doing of similar size, of much larger size, of much smaller size, right? So you will have availability to that information through our customer success team once you jump onboard with us, and we will make sure to strategize with you so that this program works from the day one until the end of the school year. So yes, we have started the process in South Carolina. I've already been in contact with several school districts and have started the onboarding process. I look forward to speaking with many of you today that have not started that process with us. So that's an amazing question, and here's where I can really dive into that for you. So we have seen a decrease in the amount of incidents total that we receive, and that's mainly due to the fact that they're not in school together. Now, the increase comes from the ones that we do receive now are all being escalated because they are emergencies. Now, where does that come from? It lives within social media and online bullying, because now, at least within school, you couldn't carry your phone around. So when you were going to class to class, you forgot about dealing with such and such. But now that you're at home all day, your cellphone is by your side all day. These kids are not getting away from social media. So them being picked on that day is a constant thing, hour over hour over hour, because there is no disconnect for them, the same way that they were able to disconnect when they went to school. It absolutely is. Some of the more recent reports are child neglect, child abandonment, where the student will be home alone all day, possibly taking care of his younger siblings. That is something that we've seen a lot of. We're starting to see a lot of depression and anxiety as it pertains to not being comfortable within the home setting, not being able to focus, and still having all these responsibilities that they have to keep up with school. So we are seeing a major change in these students being at home, and it's not for the positive. Now, more than ever, we are realizing the importance of having a safe place for these students to go and also a way for them to communicate. So we have been getting a lot of those, again, abandonment, neglect, abuse, coming through now, whereas before, we wouldn't see as much of that when the students would spend eight to 10 hours at the school. That's where customer success comes in, and developing that strategy with you ahead of time before we launch, sharing those best practices with you, the launch kit, which includes edited, created videos, animated videos in multiple languages so that we can really drive that expectation, so that there is no in-between or anything that's left unsaid. And that's something that you can look forward to. Once you start with us, we will give you that white-glove treatment to make sure that the program is introduced and is working as expected, as intended. All right, so last thing, let's go over some of the benefits. This will allow you to be proactive versus reactive, making sure that you get in front of a problem before it becomes one. You will save time managing incidents based on how you were doing this in the past. Over time, you will see an improvement in your school climate. You will see a deterrence in bad behaviors. You will start to empower those students to become upstandard versus being bystanders. You will reduce the amount of incidents that you see on a regular basis. The system entirely will help you support any compliance at the state or local level that may be a requirement. You will have access to useful resources and best practices right within your user console. And you will have a detailed documentation trail in case that situation ever occurs, and you need to be able to provide that as proof or evidence. Remember that we provide you with the launch kit with many different content pieces for you to edit and use as your own, saving you time in having to come up with how to introduce this solution to your students, your staff, your parents. As I said earlier, your admin accounts can be set up in as little as 20 minutes, and you will always have support via live chat, email, phone, and of course, you always have access to me. And most importantly, you will be providing a safe learning environment going forward. Now, with all that being said, I wanted to thank you for joining me today. When you are ready to get started, please get in contact with us. I would be more than happy to provide you with a personalized demo for you and your team. I look forward to speaking with each and every one of you. Once again, my name is Jose Abreu, and it has been my absolute pleasure to present for you today. Thank you.
Jose, thank you so much, and we're thrilled to partner with you and sure hope you select South Carolina as your home. It's a great place to live and raise a family. Now, it's time for our lunch break. Our partner, Primo Productions, will provide some lunchtime video along with the countdown clock. So in 45 minutes, we'll restart the meeting formally. Meanwhile, just leave your computer up and running. Stay connected. You'll be on mute and enjoy some of the lunchtime commercials and fun. See you soon.
Masks are part of our everyday now ladies and they serve a very important purpose. That is for sure. They cover up the germs. They can hide all sorts of skin defects, but one thing they can't do is mute people. Until now, we bring to you the Maskinator, a mask that does everything the others do, but with one special benefit. It has a soundproof layer that not only keeps out germs, it keeps out noise. Kids driving you crazy? Mom, 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 put on the Maskinator. You can't hear a thing. Tired of hearing your spouse ask for something that's right in front of his nose? No worries. Now he'll never ask again. Someone make you angry in the grocery store because she's not social distancing and she's got more than 10 items in the express lane and you want to scream at her and call her lazy and a you know what?
Relax honey, go to your happy place.
But you're too much of a lady? Not today. Scream away ladies. She'll never hear you. The Maskinator, a germ-free muzzle for all your annoying people.
We at the COVID quarantine headquarters do interrupt this scheduled program to bring you a public service announcement. It has come to our attention that there are people who are not adhering to the simple, commonly understood practices one must engage in during a pandemic of such unprecedented numbers. So as you try to navigate this new normal and shelter in place, we would like to bring to your attention some things you should never do or say when a pandemic virus hits your community. Faking a sneeze is not funny. You may think it is hilarious to go to the restaurant and let a sneeze loose on the salad bar, but you will be reprimanded. During a virus, you should never lick a doorknob. Doorknobs have an immeasurable amount of germs. Please refrain from licking them. When there is a pandemic, you do not put ketchup under your eyes and run through the grocery store yelling, "It's mutated! The strain is mutated!" This is not funny. Most people will really think that you are bleeding from your eyeballs. During a virus, you should never make your mask out of pantyhose. It will not protect you, and people will think you are robbing them. It is not funny to forget to tell your annoying great aunt Ruth that the shelter in place is over. While we agree that a quarantine requires you to work from home and that you might attend meetings in your loungewear, you should not go so far as to hold your meetings in the bathroom. It crosses the line. During an epidemic, the most dangerous thing you can do is comment on how much weight your mother has gained. And if we find anyone else that has purchased a drum set for their nephew's birthday, you will be severely dealt with. We are happy to report that during an epidemic, the normal amounts of suggested daily alcohol intakes have been extended indefinitely. You're welcome. And the official time headquarters has determined that days are now to be divided into two times: coffee and alcohol. It's a law. And lastly, we have just received a report that coronavirus can live on plastic for two weeks. Someone, please tell the Kardashians. This has been another announcement. From your public service department, you may now return to your regularly scheduled
Ladies, is your family driving you crazy? A little too close for comfort? Ready to pull your hair out? Well, don't worry. We now have a way for you to spend quality family time the way you want to spend it. The makers of Zoom online meetings now bring you Zoom, the Home Edition. Host your own family Zoom room. That's right. Why do we have to be in the same room? Now you can enjoy your husband and children from the comfort of your own device. Not ready to see them yet? No worries, they need a password to enter. Kids whining too much? Put them on mute. And if you can figure out how to record, you might even be able to send yourself as video next time. Just hit play and the kids will never know that was you from last week while you enjoy a nice, long, hot bath. And the beautiful thing about the Zoom Room Family Edition is that you don't have to leave the house. You control who comes and who goes. And pants are optional. The Zoom Home Edition. Get it today.
We're back. I trust you all had a good break and are ready to move back into our meeting. I'm thrilled to introduce Nathan Ellis, Assistant State Fire Marshal. Chief Ellis has served in the South Carolina Fire Service since 1992. His training and experience cover every aspect of fire service from firefighting, principles, and tactics to leadership and incident command skills. Chief Ellis's leadership experience includes managing a shrinking budget by reducing overtime while also adding staff. He has also been successful at acquiring grants for firefighting and special rescue equipment and to improve the safety and health of firefighters. Nathan was named Assistant State Fire Marshal in 2016, managing all facets of code inspection and enforcement, licensing and permitting, engineering and community risk reduction for South Carolina State Fire. His comments today are critically important as he discusses Act 256, a newly adopted fire code that must be enacted in your school district. Let's welcome Nathan Ellis to Risky Business.
Hey guys, can we cut the heat down just a little bit? I am so happy to be here with you today. I appreciate the South Carolina School Board's insurance trust for inviting me to the Risky Business Conference. I'm here today to share some important information with you that could change your school and could change your home. We're going to talk about the recent changes that came about because of 2018 Act 256, which requires some new safety measures for schools. Today we'll answer three questions. Why are we talking about fire safety in schools anyway? Do fires even happen in schools anymore? And then I'll leave you with a challenge that answers this question, what can I do now? So, South Carolina played an important role in school fire safety across our nation when a school fire happened in 1923 at the Cleveland School in Camden, South Carolina. On that day, there were 300 occupants in the building. They had gathered together for a program on the night before graduation. All the students and their families were there together so that the students could give a program to show all the things that they had learned that year. When a small oil lamp fell off the wall and ignited a fire, that fire resulted in 77 fatalities. That was only one of many fires in our nation that resulted in large loss of life at schools. As a result, we now have many of today's fire safety programs for schools like fire drills. That's a direct result from the school fires that happened across our nation in the early 1900s. Today, I'm going to share with you how school fires are more dangerous today than they were in 1923. While our building construction and our technology has made school buildings more safe, the fires themselves are actually more dangerous. Now, I'm not going to have time today to show this video. I will show it later at future trainings if you take those opportunities. But today, I'll just point out that Underwriters Laboratory has done a lot of research based on modern furnishings, modern furnishings that we place in our homes as well as modern furnishings that we place in our schools. Today, all of, so much more of our materials are synthetic. They're made from chemical products that are manufactured through a manufacturing process, very different from 1923 when everything was made of wood and cotton and straw. So, in your classrooms today, you have a lot of plastics. Plastics are hydrocarbons. It's the same thing that makes up the gasoline that you put in your automobiles. These plastics burn at a much faster rate with more deadly smoke and more potential for death when these fires occur. And our homes, I can't pass up the opportunity to remind you about the amount of plastics that are in your homes. It's not just the common plastics that you think about like Tupperware and Rubbermaid containers, but it's the foam materials that are in your couches and in your mattresses. It's the plastics that are a part of your decorations, your TVs, your computers. Our homes are filled with many more plastics today than they were many years ago. So, home fires are just as significant or just as deadly as school fires could be these days. So, as I talk about school fires, I'm going to relate it back to your homes. One thing we've learned in modern technology and modern science with our fire behavior that we're seeing now is that having a closed door to your bedroom can save your life. Having a closed door to your bedroom can buy you as many as 20 or 30 or 40 minutes if your home were on fire. The pictures that I'm sharing with you illustrate on the left, a fire that occurred in a home in Oconee County. When the fire department responded, they had fire burning and showing through a window. The fire department put water on the fire. They made entry just like they always do. And as they headed down this hallway, this picture on your left, you can see all the charring on the wall. You can see the smoke, how dark the walls are stained by smoke. But then they opened that door. The door that's on the right of that hallway leads into the bedroom in that picture on the right. And inside that bedroom, they found an elderly gentleman still in bed. Had that door been opened, the bedroom would look the same as the hallway. Closing your door can save you, can save your life. It can buy you time in the event of a fire at your home. We encourage people to sleep at night with your doors closed in your homes. But that's not the only equation. That's not the only piece of the puzzle. We also have to have working smoke alarms. It does no good to close your bedroom door if your only smoke alarm is down the hall or across the house. So, we encourage you to have smoke alarms in every bedroom, in every sleeping room where people sleep, and in the hallway outside of the bedroom. The hallway outside of the bedroom is the most likely place that you're going to need to go in the event of a fire. That's your, your most likely escape route. So, you want to know as early as possible if there's smoke in that hallway. With the size of our homes today and the large numbers of bedrooms that we have in some of our homes, it's important to have a smoke alarm on every level of the home and in every bedroom and the area outside of every bedroom. And when possible, it's most important to have those smoke alarms interconnected so that when one goes off, they all go off. So, closing a bedroom door is one solution to the modern fire behavior that we see today. Having a working smoke alarm so that you have early notification is another solution. But there's one more piece of the puzzle, and that's having a plan, planning and practicing escape routes in your home. Most people don't think about this. Most people never think about doing a fire drill at home. But one thing that we see in South Carolina through our investigation of fatal fires is that when the smoke alarm goes off and the house is full of smoke, most people run back to the front door or they run back to the kitchen door. They run back to the way that they enter and exit their house on a routine basis every single day. And they forget about all those other escape opportunities that they would have had. They forget about all the windows that they passed. They forget to close their bedroom door and use a window to escape. So, we want you to plan and practice escape routes because when a fire happens in your home, your mind is going to react without thinking. So, you have to have practiced the escape routes in order to survive a fire in your home. Now, South Carolina, in South Carolina, we have nearly 100 fire fatalities every year in South Carolina. We traditionally lead the nation in one of the five worst states to live in for fire fatalities. So, our message again is at your homes, let's close your door, close your bedroom door before you go to bed. Have working smoke alarms in all of the right places, in every bedroom, in every hallway outside of the bedrooms, and on every level of your house, in the bonus room above the garage, and in the basement downstairs. Let's have working smoke alarms, and when possible, have them interconnected so that when one goes off, they all go off. No matter what part of the home you're in, you will hear the smoke alarm at the earliest opportunity. And then plan and practice escape routes. Plan and practice fire drills in your home. All of those things will lead to a fire-safe home, but they'll also lead to a fire-safe school. The same principles apply to maintaining a safe school environment. Your schools are built with fire-rated construction. That creates compartmentalization. There are fire-rated doors. Now, your doors at home on your bedroom are not fire-rated doors, but they'll still buy you 20 or 30 minutes in a home fire. They'll still save your life. But at your school, you have fire-rated doors that can buy you as long as two or four hours in the event of a fire in your, in your school. So, take advantage of the compartmentalization, recognize that it's there, and understand why it's there. This program and the training that will follow will help you understand the importance of fire-rated compartmentalization, how to recognize it, know where it is, and how to maintain it. You also have, instead of smoke alarms at your house, in your schools, you have fire protection systems. You have fire alarm systems that work very similar to the smoke alarms in your house to detect a fire in its earliest stages, to give you the most opportunity, the most chance to evacuate the building before the fire grows. You also have suppression systems in modern schools. New schools have sprinkler systems that are going to help extinguish the fire. All schools have suppression systems in the kitchen that are going to control kitchen fires, cooking fires. Those fire protection systems all require maintenance. The fire alarm system requires maintenance. The sprinkler system requires maintenance. The suppression systems in the kitchen require maintenance. But those fire protection systems are a component, they're a part, they're a piece of the puzzle to make a fire-safe school. And finally, at schools, you all know, you practice and plan fire drills. Escape drills, evacuation drills are important for schools, the same as they are at home. We want students to know what the fire alarm sounds like. We want students to know exactly how they should respond when a fire alarm sounds. We want them to know where to go on the outside of the building, where's their safe place to go, so that accountability can take place, so that we can make sure that everyone has made it outside. When you combine compartmentalization with the working fire protection systems and you practice fire drills, you can have a fire-safe school. So, Act 256 is one of the ways that we're going to get there, one of the tools that our legislators have given us to get us to fire-safe schools. When we were putting this legislation together, meeting with our state legislators, a common question that they asked, that you probably ask also, is do fires even happen in schools anymore? You don't even remember the last time you saw a school fire on the news. It doesn't happen a lot, you might think, but there's actually an average of 84 school fires a year in South Carolina. And about 20 of those happen while school is in session, while the buildings are occupied. So, school fires do still happen, and they still happen in South Carolina, and they still happen while students are in the schools. When we do the future trainings on these topics, I'll be able to share even more pictures and more stories of school fires in South Carolina. But the pictures that you see in the rest of the presentation today come from school fires that have occurred in South Carolina. So, we don't always hear about them. They don't always make the news. So, that's why we think school fires maybe aren't a big problem. But the leading cause of school fires in South Carolina is intentionally set fires, where intentionally set fires make up only about 3% to 5% of other fires outside of schools. In schools, they make up 25% to 30% of our fires every single year. Now, most of those fires aren't intentionally set with the intent to do harm or with the intent to destroy the building. A lot of times, they're set for purposes of mischievous purposes. The students just want to get out of taking a test. They just want to practice that fire drill. They just want to get out of class for a few minutes. They want to go outside. They want to see their buddies. There's a lot of reasons students do that. Most of them do not have ill will in mind when they light that fire, but it still happens. This fire happened at Carolina High School in Greenville County. There were 685 students and 100 staff members in the building when a student intentionally set a fire in the bathroom by lighting the toilet paper rolls on fire. A single sprinkler head in that bathroom activated to put that fire out. The alarm sounded and all the students evacuated and the teachers evacuated. The fire department responded, but there were no injuries. There were no building damage. The, the damage was just cosmetic. There was no missed school time. Think about that. When a fire happens in a school, if it's allowed to grow and destroy the school, what does that do to learning for the students in that school? Where are they going to go to school? How long are they going to be out of school? How's it going to impact neighboring schools that might have to absorb those students? How's it going to impact families, bus routes? It's going to impact your district in a major way. In this case, there were no tax dollars lost. We didn't have to rebuild anything. And most importantly, the reasons we think school fires don't happen, there were no news stories. The news media didn't show up. There were no cameras recording the events. There was no smoke billowing into the world, into the atmosphere. School fires still occur, most of the time, they're contained to the objects or areas of origin. And so, they seem to be insignificant events, but the potential always exists for a school fire to grow into a dangerous event. So, Act 256 is going to give us some tools that we can use to prevent those school fires from becoming tragedies. It's going to help make sure that the example at Carolina High School in Greenville County, where the news media never even knows a school fire happened, that that's what happens over and over again in South Carolina, that our school fires pretty much go unnoticed because our buildings and our administrators, our teachers, are doing the things that they're required to do to maintain these buildings safe. So, Act 256 came about as a result of some legislative inquiries that actually started with news media inquiries into school fire inspections across our state. And the legislators and the news media were made aware that school, that there's no requirement that schools be inspected by a fire marshal every single year. As a matter of fact, some schools in our state at the time of the report had gone as many as eight or 10 years without a fire marshal inspection in the school. So, when we sat down with the legislators to address the problem, how can we make sure our schools are safe? How can we make sure that we don't have tragic fires in schools in South Carolina? We quickly pointed out that it's not a fire inspection that makes the school safe. It's the fire inspection and the fire marshal visit doesn't make the school any safer than as if a annual physical makes you healthy. as if a annual physical makes you healthy. Your annual physical that you have, that takes place with your doctor, doesn't make you healthy. It's just a measurement of your health. As a matter of fact, it's just a snapshot of your health on that one particular day that you happen to visit the doctor. There's a lot of other factors that go into making you healthy and maintaining your health. And the same can be said for your school. It's not the fire inspection that makes the school safe. It's what you do as school administrators, school teachers, facility managers. It's what you do every single day that makes your school safe. The fire inspection is just a snapshot in time. It's just a review of one day and sometimes just a few hours of a day while a fire marshal's in the building that he has the opportunity to educate you to different hazards that might occur in your schools. The 2018 Act 256 requires the state fire marshal and the Department of Education to create model fire safety programs and policies that could be implemented by the 2019-2020 school year. Those policies and procedures can be found on the Department of Education's website. I've provided a link for you here in the presentation. The act also requires school districts to adopt those policies and programs and implement them by the 2020-21 school year, which is this school year. Now, we understand that there's been a lot of other focus for your school districts as we started this school year. COVID-19 has definitely changed the environment and changed the world that we live in. So we recognize that most school districts have not had an opportunity to adopt and implement the programs that we've recommended by the start of this school year. So our plan, which is the reason I'm speaking to you today, is to continue to educate school districts about the requirements for the remainder of this school year, in hopes that you're able to implement them by next school year. Act 256, a part of the requirements, is going to require the fire departments to partner with the school districts. And that starts with the school districts reaching out to the fire departments. We want every school in South Carolina to have a fire department in its jurisdiction, fire department in its community that it can partner with. The purpose of the partnership is to ensure that the fire department does a fire code inspection at a routine basis. We're not going to require annual inspections simply because it's not the fire inspection that makes the school safe. It's what the school does the rest of the year, right? All the rest of the time. It's all the maintenance programs. It's all the evacuation drills. It's all the attention and focus that schools put on safety that makes their school safe, not the presence of a fire marshal for a few hours each year. However, we do want you to identify your fire code inspector. We want you to, we want you to know who is responsible for enforcing the fire code at your school. And when I say enforcing the fire code, what we want to do in the fire service is to educate you about the fire code. The reason that most businesses, schools are no different, are non-compliant with the fire code is because they don't know what the fire code requires. So it's our first goal to educate you about the requirements of the fire code. Act 256 will provide a means for us to do that. The documents that we produced have an outline of all the code requirements and all of the best practices that we would like for schools to follow. Step one is to identify your local fire department, identify your local fire marshal, build a relationship with them if you don't have one. Now, we recognize that 70% of South Carolina is served by volunteer fire departments. And volunteer fire departments sometimes don't have the time, the staffing, sometimes they don't have the training to perform fire code enforcement. They have a lot of other needs and a lot of other focuses that their time and energy is spent on when they're limited by manpower and resources, and they do a phenomenal job providing fire suppression services to our state. So in those cases where there is no local fire marshal, the state fire marshal's office will fill in the gaps. If you don't have a local fire marshal in your school district or at your, your school, then you'll simply indicate that when you file your reports with the Department of Education, and the state fire marshal's office will fill in those gaps. We are happy to partner with you at every school in South Carolina if that's what the need is, to bring these fire safety inspections and fire safety programs to your school. So Act 256 is going to require you to identify the local fire marshal and build a partnership with him. And it's also going to ask you to identify the frequency of his inspections, his or her inspections. Does he or her come every year or is it every other year? That's just for your benefit so that you understand and we have a good picture at the state level of how often schools, schools are being inspected. And it's also going to require schools to perform monthly self-assessments. So here's where the school takes ownership of fire safety in its school. Because remember, it's not the fire inspection that makes the school safe. It's what the school does and what the teachers and administrators do every single day that makes the school safe. So on a monthly basis, we've provided a simple checklist that we want schools to follow. And not every item on the checklist is for every staff member in the school. Now, school districts can decide how they want to implement the checklist, the monthly self-assessments. Not every school will do it the same way, and not every school district for sure will do it the same way. There's a lot of flexibility there. And as I go through the program, the rest of the program, I'll explain to you how we want to meet those needs, how we want to help you be able to do these self-assessments. But the self-assessment items cover things that are considered maintenance programs, like maintenance of your fire sprinkler systems, maintenance of your fire alarm systems, your kitchen suppression systems, the exhaust systems in the kitchen. All of these systems are safety systems in your school intended to maintain a safe environment, but they require maintenance. So sometimes these programs will fall to facility management personnel. Sometimes these programs might fall to a school administrator. It's different in every district. But the maintenance programs are the first category of requirements that we have on our checklist. It includes the fire-rated assemblies, those fire-rated compartmentalization, those fire-rated doors that we talked about earlier. That's part of your building maintenance. And so we have a checklist that provides a step-by-step guide on how to ensure that your fire-rated doors and your fire-rated walls are being maintained so that when a fire happens in your school, it's compartmentalized. The picture on the left shows what a hallway looks like when a fire happens in a school and compartmentalization of fire-rated door is not maintained like it should be. The picture on the right is the exact same school, same fire, but that hallway, the fire-rated doors, which are being held open for the photo, actually closed. When the fire-rated doors closed, it protected the rest of that school from the smoke and the soot and the heat and the fire damage that would occur had the doors been left open. You're not going to clean that hallway on the left in just a few hours. This school was closed for several months while cleaning and repair was done for a small fire, a small fire that occurred in a janitor's closet. Only one room had a fire in it, but the whole school was closed. The whole school was impacted with the exception of one or two hallways where those fire-rated doors closed. We want to show you how to maintain your fire-rated doors and your fire-rated walls. That's a part of our training programs that we're going to deliver this school year, and it's a part of the monthly self-assessments that we want you to do. We also have emergency lighting. Sometimes you have emergency power generators in your schools. You always have fire extinguishers. All of those systems require maintenance. They require someone to check them out on a monthly basis to make sure that they're still present, that they're still in working condition, that they're going to do the job that they're required to do when a fire happens or if a fire happens in your school. We also have a section of the monthly self-assessment that deals with classroom fire and life safety. So in classrooms, we have concerns and fire code requirements about the types of decorations and the, the way that we display artwork in a classroom, the types of curtains and how we hang them and attach them to the walls and ceilings, the types of furniture, the living room furniture. In the training that we do going forward, we will show how a sofa, how a couch that's designed for your house, how it burns. And when you see the video of the couch burning, you'll understand why couches and upholstered furniture like that, that's intended for a home, is probably not best suited for your classroom environments. But the checklist address that, addresses that, and our goal is that every classroom teacher in South Carolina become familiar with these requirements. She or he is the owner of their classroom. They get to be responsible for fire safety in their classroom. It's not the fire marshal inspection that makes that classroom safe. It's what the teacher does every single day that makes his or her classroom safe. So the checklist, when, when, when the school implements this checklist, it's not intended that one guy from facility maintenance do the whole checklist for everybody every single month. It's intended that the classroom teachers take ownership in it as well, and they become responsible for safety in their classrooms. We'll also talk about electrical safety, and that applies throughout the school, but that's an, that's a component of classroom safety, knowing how to use extension cords properly, knowing what appliances you can even use an extension cord on, and when do you need to have a, a normal power supply and a permanent outlet. So a picture of a fire there that involves some electrical equipment in a school. Fires do happen in schools. Luckily, they're contained to the item or the area of origin in most cases. We'll talk about laboratory safety for those schools that have science labs, but some of the same principles for storage of your chemicals and identification of your hazards in a school laboratory applies to your janitor's closets where all your cleaning chemicals are stored. So classroom teachers, laboratory teachers, as well as janitors and facility maintenance folks, anybody who works and cleans in your school, need to be familiar, familiar with these requirements. Our checklist will provide you the path to make sure that those folks are familiar with the requirements, and our training will be another path. We'll also talk about classroom doors. Classroom door, how do we secure them? How are doors supposed to be locked? How do we make sure that in the event of an emergency, the students are safe on the inside? No one can come in, but the students can get out when they need to. We don't prohibit them from being able to leave the school when they need to. Now, I don't have time today, but in our training in the future, the training that I hope you participate in, that you invite me back to your school district for, I'll share with you the story of Platte Canyon High School in Colorado and how just a locked door caused a lot of problems for when an intruder made entry into that school. We'll talk about the right way to lock our classroom doors and some of the hazards that might be created when we use some of the aftermarket barricade devices that are out there. We have a section of the monthly self-assessment that addresses hallway fire and life safety considerations. A lot of times, we want to make our hallways welcoming. We want to make our hallways enjoyable for the students, but we have to be careful when we do that. We want to make sure that we don't introduce a lot of fire load. The picture in the middle is actually from a news article, a video. It's a still shot from a video that shows a single poster burning in a hallway. Now luckily, that poster was burning and it was all by itself, so it didn't have other available combustible materials that it could ignite. That school, that, that poster, by the way, didn't just spontaneously combust, it was intentionally set on fire. Another example of a fire that's intentionally set. So we want to make sure that we maintain our hallways safe, and we'll talk about those door decorating contests where we decorate our doors with all these, all the, the paper elements. And we'll talk about maintaining our egress doors, like you see in the picture on the right, making sure that our doors open up, that there's no obstructions. Act 256 also requires that you perform at least two of the following drills. We want you to perform at least two active shooter or intruder drills every single year. Typically, that would be implied to mean, to mean one per semester. The same thing on weather drills, severe weather drills. You might do a tornado drill one semester and an earthquake quake drill another. You may do two tornado drills. Tornadoes seem to be more prevalent in South Carolina. During our training in the future, I'll be able to share some other stories about tornadoes that have impacted schools in South Carolina while students are in the school building. I'll tell you how the, the importance of drills and why they're so important and the outcomes there. And then there's fire drills. So fire drills have had a lot of attention lately. Our, this state law requires that you do at least two fire drills every single year. However, the South Carolina Fire Code that's adopted by regulation in our state requires monthly fire drills. So our message to school administrators, to principals and, and teachers and parents alike, is that if you comply with the fire code, the South, the South Carolina Fire Code that requires a monthly fire drill, you also will be complying with the state law that requires at least two fire drills. If you only do two fire drills, you won't be complying with the fire code, and we don't want you to be in that situation. So again, we just want to educate you to the requirements, and we really want to encourage you to do your monthly fire drills. In the future, if you take this training, you'll understand the importance of the fire drills even more when I have time to share more information about those. Now, that bottom note down there on that slide says that thinking teachers do it different. When it comes to fire drills, thinking teachers do it different. Let me tell you what that means. Back in the mid 2000s, 2005, 2006, that's when the fire service was first taught the, the difference in modern fire behavior that we mentioned early in this program and traditional or legacy fire behavior. Years ago, when a fire would happen in a house, the fire department had 15 minutes to respond, and they could still put a fire out and save a house. But with modern contents in the house, the fire department has less than three minutes to be impactful in saving lives when a fire happens in a house. In three minutes from ignition, a typical house fire, room and contents is going to become untenable. If your bedroom door's not closed, if you're, if you don't have working smoke alarms to give you early notification, if you haven't planned and practiced escape drills, then your chances of surviving a home fire after three minutes of ignition, three minutes from ignition, is drastically reduced. Years ago, you had plenty of time. So when we learned that in the fire service, we had to change our tactics. No longer can we drive the fire truck from the station to the scene, pull our hose and go in the front door and put the fire out. It's too late for that. By the time we arrive, the roof is falling in, the floors are burning through. If there's a basement, our first-in firefighters are falling into the basement when the floor collapses underneath them. So we came up with a slogan at the Fire Academy that said, "Thinking firefighters do it different." We had to emphasize to the fire service that times have changed. Modern fire behavior requires us to take a different approach. And I want to share with teachers today and school administrators that when it comes to drills in schools, be that intruder drills or fire drills, or even our severe weather drills, thinking teachers will do it different. The days of the fire alarm sounding and everybody lining up in a nice line and going out the same exit door every single time to the same meeting spot outside, those days really need to change. Those days need to have ended, and we have to have thinking teachers today. I will encourage you in the future trainings that I deliver, and I want to come to your school district, and I want to talk to your teachers about these, about fire drills. I want to give some examples and show some illustrations of how this can work. But we want teachers to take the lead. We want them to use their mind to make decisions that are going to make their children safe, that are going to keep their students safe. Teachers have the opportunity to open the door when the fire drill sounds because doors, classroom doors typically should be closed. They should open that door and look They should open that door and look into the hallway. If they see smoke in that hallway, after you've seen my videos and my other training, you'll understand why. If they see smoke in that hallway, they've got to make a decision. Can they safely take their children into that hallway? Or do they need to close the door and call for help? Close the door and open a window and use it for escape. Teachers need to be thinking. Thinking teachers will do it different. If they open that door and they don't see smoke, everything looks good, the fire alarm has sounded, there's no smoke in their classroom, but there is a stranger in the hallway that they don't recognize. They don't know who this person is. They need to be thinking teachers, and they need to do it different. They may need to close their door and keep their children inside. Now, when the fire alarm sounds, the first objective is always to escape. And I didn't mention that to lead this conversation off. But we want you to always be thinking it's time to escape. That's the first priority when the alarm sounds. But thinking teachers are going to do it different. They're going to scan that hallway. They're going to look for danger, and they're going to make a decision. When they come to the next intersecting hallway, the teacher is going to look left and right. She's going to make sure she doesn't, he or she does not see smoke or he or she does not see a stranger in the hallway. And they're going to make a decision on which way to take their children. And then when they come to the exterior door, the teacher is going to open the door first, and she or he is going to look outside and scan the outdoors. They're going to make sure that they don't see a hazard outside, whether that's a stranger outside waiting to do harm or just somebody they don't know. If the hallway is safe, then, and the outside is suspect, then you keep the children in the building, right? So thinking teachers do it different. So when it comes to fire drills, we have to rethink. We have to retrain the way that we do fire drills in schools. But fire drills are still important. Every student should know what the fire alarm sounds like. They only hear that, they only know because they hear it when we do drills. When the fire actually happens, should not be the first time they hear that sound, right? They need to know what the fire alarm sounds like. And they need to know where to go. They need to know that it means it's time to evacuate, but teachers can take the lead. Teachers can make decisions, and teachers can save their children's lives, whether it's from fire or from an intruder in the school building. We'll talk more about fire drills and future training opportunities. Please invite me to your school to have that opportunity. So what can you do now? As we wrap this little session up, I just want to share with you, I have not been able to share a lot of detailed information about the things that you can do for safety in your school. I have not been able to go into the steps that it takes that is required to maintain your fire alarms and your sprinkler systems. I have not been able to describe all the hazards or show you the pictures and the illustrations of what happens when classroom furniture burns and what happens when a student might ignite some ignitable poster on the wall or in some cases, you know, something in the bathroom in a trash can somewhere. Well, I want to have that opportunity to do that with you. So we have planned several training opportunities that the School Board Insurance Trust is going to provide with you as part of this conference. You should receive an outline, a handout that's going to have those training dates and ways to register. I'll tell you right now, you don't have to register. You can have all your teachers sitting behind one big screen and watching it together. It doesn't mean every individual has to register. So you'll learn more about that through the document that they're going to provide you at the time of this film, and I do not have that information together. But you'll learn more about it at your conference. And please reach out to me about training opportunities. We have designed training programs, two-hour segments, because it's a lot of information. Two-hour segments, one designed for school administrators, one designed for classroom teachers, and one designed for facility maintenance personnel. That could be your custodians. That could be your district-wide maintenance folks that make repairs and do routine maintenance on your buildings. So we provided training opportunities for all of them, and I want them all to attend. I want them all to take advantage of the opportunities that we've provided. We've provided that training both online, so it's easy for you to access. You can pick the time, but it is a live and in-person training. I will be leading the training. I will be telling these stories and sharing this information with you. Or you can schedule me to come to your school or come to your district. I would love to come to your school district and have a teachers' meeting or meet with all your administrators at one time or meet with your facility maintenance personnel. If possible, we'll go to a school. We'll walk through the school, and we'll educate you on all the steps of your monthly self-assessment. So any way that we can assist you with training, that's what we want to do. Because here's the challenge that I leave at the end of every one of these trainings that I'm going to do for you in the future. I'm going to remind you to please remember that the public is not aware of the potential for harm that exists in your school. They expect you to provide a safe environment for their children. Now, there's a lot of things we worry about when we drop our children off at school. I have a daughter who's in 11th grade at Gaffney High School. So I'm just as concerned or I'm no less concerned than any other parent and any other teacher out there about safety in schools. And we don't worry about fires when we drop them off at schools because we think we got that knocked. We've got that behind us. We don't worry about fires. There's a lot of other things we worry about. But the public has no idea of the threat that exists in all public buildings as a result of fire. The public didn't realize that when 300 people went to a nightclub in Warwick, Rhode Island a few years ago to watch a concert. 300 people attend, they just went out for a good night. They just thought they were going to have fun that night. And 200 people perished when the nightclub caught on fire. People didn't think, worry about their safety when they went to work at the Hamlet Chicken Plant right up the road in Hamlet, North Carolina. They went to work every single day there. They never thought fire would be something that they should be afraid of when they go to work. But one day, a piece of machinery caught fire, not the building. The building didn't burn down. Matter of fact, you ride by the building, you would never know there was a fire there. But a piece of machinery in the building caught on fire, and because of barricade devices installed on the exit doors, the employees couldn't get out. And 25 employees died in that fire. Nobody worries about fire when they go to work. Nobody worries about fire when they go to a nightclub or to a restaurant to eat. And nobody worries about fire when they drop their children off at your school. The public has no idea of the potential for harm that exists because they think you have that taken care of. They think I have that taken care of. They see a fire truck driving down the road. They see men in uniform and ladies in uniforms. They think that the safety of their children in schools is taken care of, and they think that your school district and your school administrators are protecting their children. So you have a role to play. And I just want you to remember, the public has no idea. If you take my training, if you continue with these trainings that we're going to provide, you'll understand the potential for harm that truly does exist. If I haven't been able to convey that to you in this short presentation, you'll understand it better after our future trainings. And then do your job because it's the right thing to do. Don't just do it to check the box. You know, when we talk about checklist, the monthly self-assessment, it's easy for us to think about all the other maintenance, all the other things we have to do every single month, the reports we have to complete, the tasks that we have to do. Some of them seem mundane. They seem not important. And so we just check the box. Whether we did it with our focus really on the task or not, we check the box and we say that we did it. Some people will check the box because they don't want to be in trouble. They don't want somebody to come behind them and see that they haven't done their monthly self-assessment, so let's just check the box and say we've done it. But checking the box or just doing it to get it out of the way, just halfway doing our job is not the way to do it. We want to do the job. We want to check the box because it's the right thing to do. We want to do monthly self-assessments because it's the right thing to do. And then finally, I want you to remember that one little lie, one little box that we check, one little step that we skip over because we think that it's really not important. We just don't have time today. You know, we'll catch it next month. We can wait. This one can wait. We'll do it next month. We'll change those batteries. We'll remove those chairs that are blocking a hallway. We'll fix all that next month. So let's just check the box today. Remember that one little lie can cost the world a treasure. One of my good friends, Dwight Isler from Gaffney, South Carolina, that's his son, Benji. And on March 19th, 2011, my church and Dwight and Benji and their whole family went to a children's park in Cleveland Park in Spartanburg County. And it was the opening day of the little train ride. And there's a picture of Benji on the train just a few minutes before Benji would lose his life when that train would have an accident and come off the tracks at the park. Now, the inspector who inspected that train for LLR, the Labor License and Regulation Amusement Ride Inspector, when he inspected the train the day before, this was opening day of the park, he had been there on Friday before, and the batteries were dead in the train, so he did not see the train operate. But he checked the box anyway because he had seen that train operate for many years. He's been doing that job for a long time. He's seen that train operate. He checked the box anyway and gave the permit to the park to allow them to operate their train. The park supervisor had hired a brand-new park, had hired a brand-new driver for the train that season. He had never driven that train before with people on it. He had only driven it a few times, once they put a new battery in it that day, a few times with nobody on it. That was his practice run. And the supervisor of the parks told him, "You just drive it as fast as you want to drive it, as fast as you feel comfortable," is the words he told him. "You drive it as fast as you feel comfortable." But in a filing cabinet in an office several miles away, there was an owner's manual for that train. And highlighted in the owner's manual, the train, the instructions said not to operate the train on the straightaways faster than 11 miles an hour and in the curves faster than seven miles an hour. So the driver didn't have any training. The supervisors of the park didn't really fulfill their job. They didn't recognize the hazards that could exist with that train operation there. And the inspector who inspected it, he, you know, he didn't see the train operate, but he gave it a permit anyway. I'll let you know right away that my family and my daughter was on the train. She suffered some minor injuries, but Benji lost his life. And Dwight's family, Benji's family, they're not mad. They're not upset. That day, if that had not been the day for this event to happen, then it would have been raining, and our church would not have attended that, went to that park that day. But it wasn't, and we went. The point of my story and sharing that is to let you know that one little lie can cost the world a treasure. Maybe that's what happened on that day. Maybe that's why Benji's not with us anymore. But even beyond that, there's a lot of other consequences. The poor guy who was driving that train probably will never want to ride past a child's playground again and he not remember what happened that day. He's going to live with it the rest of his life. He was recorded. It's captured on audio of him saying, "I went too fast. I went too damn fast." He knew what happened, but he didn't know ahead of time. He didn't know until it was too late that he was going too fast. The park superintendent, he lost his job. But I have never seen a man so heartbroken before. He visited us in the hospital. He visited our church on a couple of different occasions for different meetings with our families that we had in the aftermath of the wreck. He wept, he sobbed, he was heartbroken. He completely owned up to his responsibility in the whole thing. Like I said, it cost him his job. I don't know where he's at today, don't know what he does. I didn't know him personally until that day. But he has to live with that for the rest of his life. And the inspector. The inspector had a long history of doing elevators and amusement rides, was, had a perfect employee record, never had been written up at work at all, was nearing retirement, was getting close to where he would be able to retire after a career of doing that. But he lost his job as well. And the fact that he checked the box, even though he didn't see the train operating, issued the permit, had nothing to do with the accident. The fact that they issued that permit had nothing to do. Maybe he would have seen the train operate and issued the permit the right way, and the accident still would have occurred. But his little lie, checking the box, cost him his job. So just think about the responsibility that you have as administrators, facility maintenance folks. Every school teacher in our state has this responsibility. Even the custodians in your school have a responsibility to maintain a safe school environment. So I appreciate you giving me this opportunity to share these, this little bit of information with you regarding school fire safety and Act 256. I certainly hope that it puts some thoughts in your mind, and you'll start looking at fire safety a little bit differently. First, I want you to go home and check out your house. I want to make sure you have smoke alarms. I want you to make sure that your family knows to close a door. If you don't close it when you sleep, at least know that you can close it when you wake up to the sound of a smoke alarm and smoke in your house. Close your door and use an escape route. Use a window. But you're not going to think to do that if you don't practice and plan drills, if you don't talk about it as a family and think about it before the event happens. And then in your schools, take advantage of Act 256. 256 adds requirements to your schools. And everybody knows, you know, there's, we always have more requirements, more requirements, and less time, right? So it seems like we're adding requirements to your schools, but everything in Act 256, everything in the checklist are things that your school should have already been doing. It's not new stuff. It's just our attempt to educate you to the requirements of your responsibilities anyway, okay? So it's not new responsibilities. It's just an attempt to educate you and let you, each school district, each principal, each teacher, each custodian, take ownership of fire safety in their schools. My contact information is on the screen. It's being shared with you. Please reach out to me, send me an email, give me a phone call, invite me to your schools. I would be happy to share these presentations with you. I can customize them to whatever format you need them. We can do them virtually, and we will have some training opportunities that's being advertised with you as well for the virtual trainings. So please be in touch with us and let us know how we can serve you, how we can help you be in compliance with Act 256, but also make sure, the most important part, just make sure that we have fire-safe schools in South Carolina. Thank you.
Nathan, thank you so much. I don't know about you, but many of the things you shared caused me to think not only about the application to our schools in compliance with Act 256, but also to think about my home and family. Thank you so much for the enlightened presentation. Ethics in the workplace is a serious matter, but talking about it doesn't have to be business as usual. Long ago, our next speaker, Chuck Gallagher, learned a lesson about ethical choices and consequences the hard way. Now he shares his experiences so others don't have to. You may have seen Chuck on television or heard him on CNN, CBS or NPR radio programs. His business insights are sought after for his strong position on ethics and ethical leadership. His unique presentations and laser pointed focus on the human side of ethics clearly demonstrate he brings something to organizations that isn't found in typical business speakers. Described as creative, insightful, captivating a person that connects the dots between behavior, choices, ethics and success. Chuck Gallagher gives his clients what they need to turn concepts into actions and actions into results. Please join me in welcoming Chuck Gallagher.
Every choice has a consequence. On October 2nd, 1995, I took 23 physical steps. That was leaving a car that I was transported in and walking into what would become my new home. As I took those steps, I, I thought about my wife. I thought about my two children, Rob and Alex. So they, they were just little tykes at the time. I, I thought about my career. At that point, I was tax partner in a CPA firm. I had testified before Congress on various aspects of federal tax law, written articles in national magazines. I taught continuing professional education courses in 30 states. I was Chuck Gallagher. I was a, a, a somebody. I thought about the church where I had been music director for 12 years. I literally thought about everything that defined my life. But as I, as I took those 23 steps, on the 24th step, I reached out my hand, I pushed, opened the door and I stepped in to federal prison. On that day, I became 11, 642, 058, an inmate, what most people would define as a nobody. You see, every choice has a consequence. Now, the last live trip that I did when I was doing an ethics training program, in that program, when I walked in and, and just repeated to the audience exactly what I said to you, I came in looking a little different. I was actually in an orange jumpsuit and handcuffs. Uh, you probably can imagine that, well, that created a little bit of a, a dis-ease within the audience because they weren't sure what in the world was taking place when they were supposed to be in an ethics class, which by the way, for most people is supposed to be boring. But gosh, I didn't want to make it boring. But I will never forget that day. Now this is pre-COVID-19 because of course I'm coming to you virtually because we aren't having live events right now. So part of the challenge as we move through this program is to make sure that what I present to you is valuable and is meaningful, but also can be a little entertaining. So I'm going to go back to when I was actually going through TSA security. I'll never forget it because of course you have to take out your license and you have to have your boarding pass and so I got up to the TSA agent. And in the process of doing that, he looks at me and he says, okay, move forward. And I do putting my carry-on bags on the line so it can go through scanning. Now, I generally don't believe in checking bags, especially when there's the possibility they could get lost. So effectively what I did was I carried my orange jumpsuit and handcuffs with me. So here it is. It's going through airport security. The TSA agent is sitting there looking at it as it moves past and they see handcuffs. TSA agent looks at me, he said, are you law enforcement? Now, obviously I was not law enforcement, although I'd like to have said I was. I mean, if you work for the IRS, if you work for Homeland Security, CIA, FBI, you would have a beautiful gold badge and that would be kind of fun. But if I said that, it would have been impersonating an officer, subject to five years in prison and $5,000 fine and having been to prison once, I did not want to try that again. So something came over me at that moment when he said, are you law enforcement? And that just devilment of my quirky personality kicked in and I said, no, I'm a pervert. At which point in time, he then looked at me, God is my witness, he winks. So it taught me a valuable lesson and that lesson is, you know, it's probably not good to mess with the TSA agents, especially when the outcome is something that's somewhat Now, all of that said, you might be asking yourself a fair question. Why would someone who is a convicted felon be actually asked to do a program and help us understand ethical behavior? My response to that is, well, who else is better? Because one thing I know from personal experience is this, smart, intelligent people can make dumb, stupid choices. It's easy. And you see, it's not the question of what should we do or should we not do, or what does our code of ethics say we're supposed to do? But the question is what motivates really smart people to do dumb things? And that's what we're going to spend some time talking about here today. You see, the way I look at it is the best defense is a good offense. And the key to effective ethical leadership is to understand what motivates ethical or unethical human behavior and then to take action. So as we move through the process today of this course, we're going to look at what motivates that behavior and the actions that you can take to, well, let's put it this way, help keep people between the ethical lines. Now, let me ask you a few questions. Okay? And, and, and before we get into the questions, I, I want to give you a number and let you know virtually how we're going to conduct this survey. Okay? So first, if you will, wherever you are, write down this number, 828-244-1400. That's 828-244-1400. Yes, that's 828-244-1400. Operators are standing by. Actually, that's not really true. That is my cell phone number, but the easiest way, when we're in an environment of Zoom to be able to conduct a survey is to do that via text. Now, don't be uncomfortable with this. You're not on any list. It's just a simple yes or no in many cases or answers to that number. So keep the number handy because we'll use it from time to time. So get your phone out. Here's question number one. How many of you would voluntarily choose to make an unethical choice? Let me repeat the question, if you will, go to your phone, 828-244-1400. Yes or no? That's all I'm looking for. I expect my phone to blow up here in a second, but yes or no, hit me with your best shot. How many of you would voluntarily choose to make an unethical choice? Now, let me wait for just a second and let the text come rolling in. Okay, so the phone is blowing up and let me look down through here. Okay? Pretty much what I expected. Okay, so for those of you that are willing to play ball here, uh, most of you, how many of you would voluntarily choose to make an unethical choice? Now, this is not scientific, but of those of you who are willing to respond, here's what I'm getting. Uh, maybe depending upon what it is, no, 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 yes, yes. I like that. Maybe, no, 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 no. And there's another one, maybe. Okay, I think I prompted you on that one perhaps. Okay, so let's go to question number two. Same cell phone number, okay, same text number. Here's the question. How many of you feel that voluntarily breaking the law is unethical? Again, 828-244-1400, text me your response. But how many of you feel that voluntarily breaking the law is unethical? I mean, think about it. You go to the convenience store to get gas, go inside, which is one of the few places you can go inside now with COVID-19 ravaging the country, and someone is robbing the store. That's voluntarily breaking the law. How many of you feel that voluntarily breaking the, okay, my phone is blowing up. How many of you feel that voluntarily breaking the law is unethical? I'm going to give you just a minute. This one's catching some interesting things. No, 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 no. Depends upon what law. I do it every day. Okay, that's, you know, the funny part about being virtual is whenever all you're doing is texting and I have no idea who you are, you can be blatantly honest. This is really kind of cool. No, no, no. Well, it is, it's, I haven't even think of voluntarily breaking the law is unethical? Yes, 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 yes. Yes, it's unethical, yes. Yeah, most of the time, yes, yes. Okay, so so far, the majority of what I'm getting, wait a minute, there's a few more. Yes, yes, depends on the law, depends on the law, yes. Okay, so it's generally moving, either it depends on the law we're talking about, or the answer is yes, it's unethical. Okay. All right, so let's go to question number three. Question number three. How many of you have driven on the interstate highways in the last two weeks? Now, if you've texted me before, that means you don't have to type the number in. Okay. Yes, 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 yes. Okay, there's, I like that. A smiley face. Okay, so somebody has an idea of what the next question is. Yes, yes, yes. I haven't been out much because of COVID-19. Okay, fair enough. I get this. Yes, yes. Couple more smiley faces. All right, so for those of you that are psychic, uh, let's go to question number four. Question number four is, and how many of you have exceeded the speed limit by five to 10? And I'm getting lots of smiley faces, a lot of yeses. Doesn't look like quite as many responses as in the first two. Okay, now they're coming. More smiley faces. Uh, stupid question, everyone speeds. Okay, really? All right, so I've gone through these questions, so let's think about this for just a second because I'm going to kind of recap. Okay? How many of you, uh, would choose, voluntarily choose to make an unethical choice? Most people's response on the texts that I've gotten was, no, I would not voluntarily choose to make an unethical choice. The second question, which kind of carries us back to this whole idea of, well, what's ethical and is ethical only about the law? Second question was, well, do you think that voluntarily breaking the law is unethical? And most people's response was yes. There were some exceptions because some of you are pretty sharp. You wonder, well, what's the law? Uh, so we decided, let's go down the road of speeding. Have you driven on the interstate highways? Well, the answer to that for most of us is yes. Over the past two weeks, I have. Then the question is, how many of you have sped during that time? Five to 10 over? And the answer was, well, most everybody, at least those of you that are willing to play along and to text and to give me answers virtually this way. So think about it for just a second because functionally, we all say, well, yeah, we've driven on the interstate highways, but then secondarily, we're apt to speed. And, and here's the thing, and this is critically important as we move forward. You see, it is easy to make unethical choices when they seem socially acceptable. As we, as we move forward, take a look at the slide because our intentions create our behavior. Let me say that again, our intentions create our behavior. On an individual level, for all of us who are on this call, the intentions that we have create the behavior that follows. Now, at a company level, at a corporate level, our culture creates the systems that follow. Let me say that again, the culture of the organization creates the systems that follow. Now, let me give you two quick examples. From an intention behavior perspective, let's go back, and this goes back a number of years, when we had sports and when we had football to Ray Rice. Y'all remember Ray Rice, Baltimore Ravens, up and comer, made a lot of money. I mean, he was, he was very well recognized, was engaged in fact. But he and his fiance, he and his lovely fiance were at an event someplace together and somewhere along the line, as happens in human behavior, they got into an argument. Now, keep in mind, if you get into an argument, if something happens, and I mean temper start to boil up. Now, keep in mind, if you get into an argument, if something happens, and I mean tempers start to boil up, here they were, they were out at dinner, and, and this, this argument was starting to really fester and boil up, but if you're sitting there at dinner with each other, you are clearly not going to just go crazy in the restaurant. So they were angry, but they, they kept their cool. And, and they left the restaurant, and they began to stroll across the median area, going to their hotel. Now, here they are in public, and occasionally people would look, and, ah, that's Ray Rice, wow, oh, wow. And you'd have some paparazzi that would snap a picture, so clearly, even though you're angry with each other, you gotta be kinda cool, wave a little bit, and just move this on, geez. And they get into the hotel, and they walk through the lobby of the hotel, and again, people are kind of recognizing them, they're just trying to, they're just trying to find a place of safety, because they're really not happy. They push the door to the elevator, the elevator opens, no one inside, they step in, and it closes, and they're alone. First time they've been alone, and they're hot. Oh my goodness, and the eruption that took place in that elevator. She was up in his face, she was letting him know exactly what he thought, he was letting her know what he thought. She got to the place, I mean, they, the words were flying, and finally, she spit at him. Now, intentions create behavior. Now, let me make sure I'm crystal clear with this. I do not in any way condone what Ray Rice did, I wanna say that categorically, I do not condone what he did. But I could hear in his head, would you just shut up? And with that, the right hook caught her in the jaw and knocked her out cold. Bam, there she is on the elevator floor. And of course, there's that moment of, holy crap, what did I just do? And the elevator door opens. And here are people looking at this big guy with this girl on the floor, to which, of course, he grabs her and says, she's passed, she's had too much drink, girl can't hold her liquor, picks her up easily enough for him, starts to walk her out of the elevator, and hopes and prays nothing bad's gonna happen. Here's a note, note, note to self. In every elevator, there's a camera, the camera's always recording what's taking place in the elevator, so guess what? When you've been in an elevator, and you might've copped a kiss, or copped a feel, or scratched someplace that you didn't want people to see, guess what? Somebody's seen that. So somewhere along the line, somebody that reviews elevator tapes, I'm guessing they worked in West Virginia, but I could be wrong, but somebody that reviewed elevator tapes are sitting there watching the tape and said, hey, I bet that's old Ray Rice right under. Good golly, he done knocked her out. I bet TMZ'd pay $1,000 to see that. And the next thing you know, the tape from the elevator is sold to TMZ, TMZ has it all over the media. Ray Rice, by the way, no longer plays for the Baltimore Ravens, in fact, he doesn't play for the NFL, he is now the poster child for domestic abuse. Do you think he intended that, that day? I don't think so. Intentions create behavior. Intentions somehow can flash like a match when something changes in life. Now, for where we go, we're gonna spend a fair amount of time talking about intentions and behavior. So, at this point, we're going to look at individual intentions and the behavior that follows, because as important as culture is, and systems are important, the reality is, our intentions drive our individual behavior, and individuals are the people who, in the truth of things, will make ethical or unethical choices. Intentions create behavior. Now, you'll notice on the screen, it says problem area, blind spots. So, we've talked about social acceptability, let's look at blind spots. And I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions, I just want you to think about, you know, these folks that you might see on the screen. In fact, let me ask you this first question, who is this person? Former governor Mark Sanford. Now, some of you might remember years back the story. Here it is, we're in South Carolina, and sometimes we just have weird questions, like someone picked up the telephone, called our state Capitol in Columbia, and said, what is our governor doing today? Well, the answer that came back on the other end of the phone was, well, he's been so, so busy governing, that he's taken some time to hike on the Appalachian Trail so that he could clear his mind. Well, we wondered, huh, well, wonder where he is on the Appalachian Trail? And with that question came some stammering, only for us to eventually find out in our fair state, that our governor had not been on the Appalachian Trail clearing his mind. He had in fact, hopped a private flight to Argentina where he had a mistress. Now, I would venture to say that most of us in this program today would say, oh my goodness, that's probably not the ethical thing for the governor of South Carolina to do, oh, by the way, while he is dutifully married. Now, we, we in South Carolina are kind-hearted people. We knew his wife had all the money, and she was gonna divorce him, and that began to explain to us why in fact, he was taking salsa lessons. 'Cause the song, or the dance, rather, in South Carolina is the shag. By the way, you don't ask an English person what to shag, because that will get you slapped. But in South Carolina, that's a lovely invitation to dance. So, Mark Sanford continued to be our governor until the end of his term. We in fact, thought about changing the state song to, "Don't cry for me, Argentina." Okay, I'm really kidding about that, but we may as well have some fun if we've gotta be here together and talk about ethics. But just in case you said, well, my golly, you're picking on a Southern Republican. I thought, let's pick on a Southern Democrat. Except, this one's from North Carolina, now probably a lot of you know that face, John Edwards. Oh, yes, if you go back, what, 12 years or so, to 2008, the Democratic nomination for President of the United States, three people running, that was in the days when you didn't have 17 people running for president. It was John Edwards, Hillary Clinton, and Barack Obama. And, and at the beginning, whoa, John Edwards, he had a nice little commanding lead, people looked at him and said, oh my gosh, every hair is in place, oh, he is so articulate, and has a, a certain Southern accent about him. Why, he might be the next John F. Kennedy. But now, okay, so let's just take a quick timeout. If you're running for President of the United States, one of the things that's gonna happen is you're gonna hire a videographer, that person is gonna be with you every waking moment, they're gonna be capturing video of your campaign events and what's taking place as you trek to become President of the United States. Why do they do that? Well, if you win the presidency, you're clearly gonna have your presidential library. And if you have a presidential library, let's be honest, most people don't read books these days. Or if they do, it's electronic. But more people, more and more people would like to see what's happening in full live color, in full video, so that's the need for the videographer. Well, John took a kind of liking to his videographer, in fact, he, he took more than a liking to her, he impregnated her while his wife was fighting breast cancer. Not exactly the, not exactly the most ethical choice. And then, well, just in case you think I'm picking on politicians, oh no, let's not do that. What about Martha Stewart? Martha Stewart, who has a massive empire, who has a line of clothing for dogs at Pets R Us, or whatever it is. Martha Stewart. Now, why was Martha Stewart convicted? Many people would say, I know, insider trading. Eh, not insider trading. Martha Stewart was convicted because while she was being investigated for insider trading, she lied. And lying to federal authorities will end you up in an orange jumpsuit and handcuffs. You see, all of these things are blind spots. So think about it. Former governor of South Carolina was in a blind spot, he thought, who's gonna know? You know, nobody's gonna know. Or John Edwards, I'm in a blind spot, I'm running for president. In fact, there was a lady in Charlotte, North Carolina, her name was Bunny, first name. She spent, I think, about $2 million to take his videographer, who was pregnant, to California, perhaps out of sight, out of mind, 'cause you know, all politicians do that. Or it could've been Martha Stewart, I'm the smartest woman in the room. I can lie my way out of this one. Eh, not so fast, Martha. Ethical lapses do not start big. You'll notice on the screen, it says emotional trigger points. Now, I wanna be really, really practical here. Ethical lapses are not something that consciously we sit back and say, I am going to do something unethical. Ethical lapses typically happen in the subconscious arena of our psyche, of our beingness, and they bubble up mostly because there's some form of emotional imbalance. I don't mean we're crazy, I just mean there's a challenge that takes place in life. And by the way, as we go through these challenges, I wanna just make it really practical for a second. As we go through them, at the end, you will see that today, we are in the trifecta of these challenges. But let's take a look at it for just a second, because an emotional trigger kind of is, am I going to do this or I don't do this? It's a do or a don't, so to speak. And, I'm gonna be the first to say this, so that we're crystal clear, I am not like a brain scientist, but I wanna give you a little brain science, 'cause this brain science is going to help frame this next part of our discussion. Okay, so here's how it works. As a human being, everybody that's on this call, okay, we're here today, we're making the choice to be here to watch this little square box with this little crazy guy on there carrying on this conversation, that's somewhat one-way, although thank you for your participation, and we'll do some more here in a moment. But think about this with me for just a second. Here we are in the little box, right? Uh, we are here by choice. Rational thought takes place right here, in the frontal lobe of our brain. So if we're sitting here and everything in life is generally going okay, there's nothing major or weird taking place, then this is where ethical choice takes place, this is where rational thought takes place. But as soon as something triggers us, as soon as there is an emotional trigger, fight or flight, so to speak, then we instantly move from frontal lobe to lizard brain. Or basically, the blood flow from the frontal cortex of our brain immediately goes back here, and we do lizard brain, which is fight or flight, we're going to make a decision, and we're not rational in making it. Now, let me give you a quick, simple example, there's a good friend of mine, his name is Rick. Rick and his family created a really, really cool animal adventure show called Scaly Adventures. In fact, Rick's son, Pierce, at one time was the youngest animal adventure TV star on the planet. And their program created in the Greenville, South Carolina area literally was broadcast on six continents. That's really cool stuff. But Rick is a, a professional speaker, and he does some amazing work on overcoming fear. So one day, he's at a program in Charlotte, and I happened to be there with him. And he said, you know, we're gonna talk a little bit about overcoming fear, and so here he is, and he's captivating. He told the audience, by the way, he said, listen, when we're finished the program today, I just wanna let you know I brought peaches for everyone. And they were like, oh my goodness, how totally nice is that, you brought us peaches, that's crazy, never had anybody do that. So Rick goes into the program. Here he is, he's doing the program, he's going through the process, everything is going just fine. He finishes it up, and by the time he finished, man, those people were, they were fired up. They were like, oh my goodness, if Tony Robbins had firewalk here, we could walk the fire, we can overcome everything. I mean, we got it, Rick, this overcoming fear, this was amazing. And then he said, y'all, before we leave though, I just wanna get your peaches. And he reaches under the table, and there's a, I don't know, it's, I don't call it Tupperware, a Tupperware container, plastic container about yay tall, it's one of those things you put like wrapping paper or something in and slide under the bed, it gives you place to store things. And he brings that out, and inside that Tupperware container is peaches, the 16-foot albino boa constrictor. And that's a monster snake, and he picks that thing up and sets it on his shoulders and spreads his arms out, and there's peaches. Y'all, it was the most amazing thing I've ever seen. Folks in the back of the room, as soon as he pulled that snake out, just bolted for the door, I mean, bolted for the door. Now, Rick did that to prove a point. As much as everybody in the room thought they were overcoming fear, and they could walk on fire, and it was not gonna be a problem, as soon as he confronted them, now keep in mind, they were in the back of the room. If peaches was hungry, peaches could eat the people on the front of the room, the folks in the back are as safe as you'll ever be. By the way, peaches had been fed, that was not an issue, but nonetheless, you get the idea. But he illustrated to them that when something happens that triggers you, you are not emotionally in control of your autonomic response system, and that's typically what gets us in trouble whenever we make unethical choices. So, what are the three emotional triggers? There are three primary reasons people have lapses within the organization. So let's look at the first one. First one is financial. Now, financial, alright, let's think about it. The easiest one is go back to 2008, right, at the Great Recession. But go back to 2008 and what happened? Lots of people around the country had lost their jobs. People found out their houses were underwater, I don't mean literally underwater, I mean underwater figuratively in that there was too much debt on the house. The house was foreclosed, there were lots of people that had short sales. People were not able to get credit, therefore, the market started to dry up, the stock market went, and it tanked. And people were like, whoa, this is crazy, and it was tough times, and I don't think anybody escaped, at least knowing people that were challenged during these times. Okay, let's look past financial. The next problem could be a relationship problem, okay? And in a relationship problem, okay, listen, timeout, we're all in relationship. We're all in relationship with each other because we're on this meeting together, we're in relationship with each other at our places of employment, we're in relationship with each other because of our family and our connection with our spouse, our children, grandchildren, et cetera. So there's always going to be a time, at some point in time, when the relationship is going to be challenged. The relationship is challenged, that could create a problem. That would cause me to move from rational thought to irrational choice. Or we could go to the third option, health issues. Now, again, you can tell by the color of my hair, I've been on the planet for a little while, and let's just be really honest with each other. The longer we're on this planet, the greater probability is at some point in time, we are going to face a health issue. Those emotional trigger points are the things that create challenges in life. And the story I told you about Rick at the beginning is the same thing that we would end with, which is, when something happens from an emotional perspective that you are unprepared for, you don't know when you will shift from rational thought to lizard brain. Now, one of the questions that comes up often is the question of what causes an otherwise honest person to do dishonest things? There are really three components of an ethical lapse. And, and this is one of those things, if you're in the management arena, you want to look at this, you wanna be aware of it, you wanna know what's taking place. If you are an employer, participant in an organization, you wanna know, what are those things that could take place that would allow me, someone who... someone who would never do something wrong, to make that first choice that could take me down a very quick and steep slippery slope?" So, let's look at it this way. Three components of an ethical lapse. Now, I'm gonna go back to 1987. It collapsed in 1990, but I'm gonna go back to 1987. And here's what happened. 1987, January, in fact, of 1987, I get a call from my local banker, David. David calls me, and he says, "Chuck," he says, "it looks like you're two months behind in your house payment." "Is there a problem?" I was two months behind in my house payment. In fact, here's the way I would put this. "I was overextended and underfunded." What does that mean? That means I had too much debt. Overextended, underfunded, too much debt. "I was robbing Peter to pay Paul, I was having problems paying all of my bills." Our first son was born, November 30, 1986. So as you can imagine, December, we have his first Christmas, it's his birthday at the end of November, and we had planned everything, and spending was out of control, and I failed to make my house payment. I assumed that, "Well, I probably could get by with it, I certainly will catch it up." But on that day, unexpectedly, not something I anticipated, the banker calls and, "Are you two months behind in your house payment?" By the way, this is the banker that really liked me, we went to Sunday School together, we were in the same church, we knew each other, we were kind of chicken-eating buddies with each other's family, and he sent me lots of business. Which is really cool. Unless, you can't manage your own money. So here's what happens. Remember I talked about your frontal cortex and lizard brain? Well, frontal cortex, whenever he said, "You're two months behind in your house payment, is there a problem?" It immediately went blood drain to lizard brain, and I'm like, "Holy smokes." If I admit that I can't manage my own financial affairs, and I'm tax partner in a CPA firm, and he sends me lots of business, he's gonna think to himself, "Well, if he can't manage his financial affairs, why am I sending him business? Because I want to send business to people that can manage their financial affairs." So as I'm sitting there thinking about it, gosh, I can't admit to him that I can't manage those affairs, because if he didn't send me business, that means I'd have less business, and less business means less revenue, and if I can't pay my bills right now, I certainly don't need less revenue. Gosh, what am I going to do? That's what going from rational thought to lizard brain is. So I immediately said, "David, are you sure the payment has not been misapplied?" Now, in 1987, I could get by with that. Some of y'all remember. 1987, computers, floppy drives, no internet, different world. I regret what I did in 1987, which I'm getting ready to share with you, and not buying Apple stock and Microsoft, because if I was, oh, I could have had my own private jet today. But that's a different issue. "Are you sure that payment hasn't been misapplied?" His response, "Well Chuck, I don't think so, but let me check, I'll get back with you after lunch." Okay, that'll be great, David. We hung up the telephone. Now, here's what happened. One, we've got a three-legged stool. Now notice with a three-legged stool, you cannot stand on the stool unless all three legs are in place. So the first leg of that three-legged stool was the need leg. What do I mean by that? I needed money. $2,000, to be exact. My house payment was $1,000 a month. By the way, $1,000 a month house payment in 1987 is a big house payment. So I needed $2,000, there was need. Oh, I got him off the telephone, thank goodness. Now what I need to do is, since I've got him off the telephone, I need to find an opportunity to solve this problem. Because see, I need to come up with $2,000, I need to come up with $2,000 real quick. What am I gonna do? Oh, I know, I could, I could borrow it from my partners. I mean, listen, after all, I was tax partner in the CPA firm. At the end of tax season, some three and a half months later, four months, we're gonna get a big old juicy bonus. I mean, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars, a big old juicy bonus. So you know, if that circumstance is what it is, why can't I just go ahead and borrow $2,000 against the, what would have been a $50,000 or $60,000 bonus then? That's a great idea. Oh, oh gosh, but timeout. I forgot, my partners were on an audit in western North Carolina, this was a Friday. They weren't gonna be back until probably 6:30, 7 o'clock PM. Which means, the people that signed the checks could not write a check and sign it and give it to me so that I could satisfy that problem at the bank. Well, that's not gonna work. What about, I know, mama? My mother, sweet lady. Lived in Maryland. I could have called mom and said, "Mom, can I borrow $2,000?" What do you think mama would have said? Yes, my lovely son. Okay, I'm adding a little something to that. By the way, one of the last live presentations I did in 2019, a whole group of people out there, and I found a really pleasant lady out in the audience, and I went up to her, and I said, "If you were mom, and I said, 'I need to borrow $2,000,' what would you say?" And I thought I'd found the perfect person. She looked at me, she said, "I've been on social security for eight years, you ain't giving me a damn thing, why should I give you any money?" And everybody cracked up in the audience that was out there, and it was like, okay, note to self, find somebody that looks cooperative, that's not gonna give you that kind of answer. But the truth of the matter was, if I had talked to mom, what would have happened? Well, even if she was willing to loan the money, I needed it in an hour. In an hour. We didn't have PayPal, we didn't have the ability to take a picture of a check and instantly deposit it. We didn't have those things in 1987, so that wasn't gonna work. What can I do? Oh, I've got it, lizard brain. I am the trustee of a client's trust. What I could do is, I could get it from them. Now, here's how this plays, okay? So let me just kind of play this out for just a second. Here I am, and I'm going to be the person that needs the money. I look over to my trustee self, and I say, "I need $2,000." My trustee self looks back at me and says, "This is highly irregular and unusual." Well, that's true, but I needed the money. So I said, "Here's what I'll do." Now keep in mind, I'm having this conversation with myself. I'm a Gemini, we're supposed to be the twins, that's an easy thing to do, I talk to myself all the time. Probably some of you already recognize that. But what am I gonna do? Well, if you'll give me $2,000 today, I will pay you $2,200 at the end of April, that is four months. Wow, 10% in four months, I'm averaging 6% per year. 10% in four months is the equivalent of 30% per year, that is a great return, but this is so highly unusual. Oh, but don't worry, here's what we'll do. I'll type up a note. So I went to the computer, WordPerfect, WordStar. Most anybody that's real young, I've never heard of those two word processing programs, but WordPerfect, WordStar, I went and I typed, "I, Charles Gallagher, being of sound mind and body..." Clearly not sound mind, although body might be better than today. "I, Charles Gallagher, being of sound mind and body, do hereby blah, blah, blah." And I typed a note and stole the money. Now, people have asked me this question many times. "How did you sleep at night?" Well, there was a need, I found an opportunity. This is critically important. There's a need, I found an opportunity to sleep at night, I had to rationalize my behavior. And I rationalized theft as a loan. And that afternoon, David at the bank called me, he said, "Chuck, I've checked." And before he could finish, I said, "David, I am so sorry, I am so embarrassed, I can't believe this." But the circumstance is such that, well, you know, my wife and I, we just had our first child, Rob, at the end of November, and, well, she pays the bills. And she thought in her postpartum period that I was taking care of it, I thought she was continuing to take care of it, neither one of us did. Now let me be honest, she did not pay the bills, I did, I was lying through my teeth, but I needed in my mind to create something that was plausible. David said to me, he says, "Well Chuck, don't worry." He said, "Let me, I'll share something with you." He said, "I passed a bad check once in college." And during that phone call, we had a male bonding moment. Need, I needed $2,000. Opportunity, hmm, I could take it from the trust with every intent to pay it back. Rationalization, well, I'm just borrowing it. And I took the stolen money down to the bank and paid the house payment. And at the end of tax season, sure enough, I paid it back. I did what I said. Now, let me just say this, because I want to really make this crystal clear, this is really, really, really important. Three-legged stool, you can't stand on unless you have all three legs in. If all you do is screw the need leg in, you can't stand on the stool. If you have need and opportunity, you can't stand on the stool. But if you can put the rationalization leg in, you can stand on that stool. Rationalization's like wet cement, it's kind of what holds it all together. So I stole the money, found the opportunity, rationalized it, and at the end of tax season, I paid it back. Now all of a sudden, the cement was getting harder, you see, this foundation I created, yeah, it's solid. So I did it again. And I paid it back. Now, this wet cement has rebar in it, and it is powerful. You see, if I do something once, and I get by with it, I might do it again. And if I get by with it, there's a fair chance I'll continue to do that. Now let me stop for just a second, because some of you would say, "Well, I would never do that, I can't believe that." No, you speed. You get on the highway, whenever the law says, "This is what it is, this is what you're supposed to do." You get on that highway and you speed, because the rationalization is, "If I don't get caught, I probably won't get caught, and because everybody does it, it must be okay, and therefore, under nine, you're fined, over nine, you're mined," so says the highway patrol. Which is not really true. So, that's how this plays. So how can a person rationalize violating a code of ethics? Think about that for just a second. How can a person rationalize violating a code of ethics? And it really is kind of simple. Let's look at what I've got coming into the screen. Number one, if I can rationalize behavior, that I find an opportunity that allows me to solve a need, what do I magically have? Everything is perfectly in balance. Now, let me say this, just so we're crystal, crystal clear. Everything that we've talked about relates to our behavior each and every day. Okay, so let's just, just so we're all okay and on the same page. I decided two years ago, at this point, that I needed to lose weight. So I did the keto kind of diet, Atkins, whatever you want to call it, which I thought was wonderful. Meat and fat and veggies, I was a happy camper, no carbs or low carbs. And ended up losing 35 pounds. But then as time goes on, what happens? You sit back and you say, "Well, need, opportunity, and rationalization." "Gosh, I've gotta catch a flight up to Indianapolis, and I have to grab something to eat." Well, what are you going to eat at the airport? That is, no carb or low carb. Just this past week, I had my first flight since March. And going through the airport in Orlando, Florida, which was like a ghost town, the only eating establishment open was Dunkin' Donuts. So my choice was, I could eat nothing and be fairly hungry, or I could grab a donut and some orange juice, which is nothing but carbs, but satisfies the hunger. Need, I'm hungry. Opportunity, ain't nothing but Dunkin' Donuts here in Orlando. Rationalization, well, one donut and some orange juice is probably not going to dramatically impact my diet. But if I do it once, and twice, and three times, and nothing amazing happens quickly, there's a chance I will go off the diet and revert back to adding pounds. Now, let's put these circles back in different perspectives. If my relationships, if my health, if my financial well-being is all intact, if all of that is equally intact, if I know that I've got a job, I go home to my loving wife, and the doctor's giving me wonderful clearance for my health, if all of that were true, I probably will make great choices. But as soon as the need circle blows up and gets out of balance, what happens? When all of a sudden it gets out of balance, there is more space within which to rationalize poor behavior, and more space within which you find opportunities to rationalize poor behavior. Unethical behavior. Behavior that doesn't get the results that you truly want. That's what I call going to lizard brain. See, I can talk to you all day, but when it comes down to it, you have to be the one to put value behind the concept of making positive ethical choices. You see, before I took those 23 steps, I thought I made good choices. But after I became 11642058, I found out something. And that is, every choice has a consequence. And before I took those 23 steps, well, I lived life a bit as an illusion, that's the easiest way to put it. I mean, there were a lot of positive things that I did. You know, but it was a little bit like living a life of David Copperfield. There was some stuff that was real, and there was some stuff that was near magic. It was illusion. But after I became 11642058, I found out something, and that is, the truth will always come out. No matter what happens, no matter how slick you are, no matter how smart a Martha Stewart person you are, the fact is, the truth always comes out. And sometimes it comes out in ways that you never would have anticipated. And lastly, before I took those 23 steps, I, I thought I was successful. Success was defined by the house, the car, the clothes, the watch, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The bling, some people would call it. But after I became 11642058, I found out something, and that is, success really doesn't have anything to do with that. True success is making a positive impact on the lives of other people. I hope that this program has changed some perspectives, opened some doors, altered some thinking, and expanded your mind. And I hope that you recognize that really, every day, with what you do personally and professionally, that you have the potential to positively impact the lives of other people. Ladies and gentlemen, I started with a statement, and I'm going to end with the same statement. Every choice has a consequence. God bless.
Chuck, thank you for making Ethics Fun and opening our eyes to the ease in which well-intended, smart people can veer off the ethical path, and most importantly, what we can look for to keep us all between the ethical lines. Wow, what a great day. I hope you all enjoyed our virtual conference. Please be on the lookout for a survey in your email soon. Best of luck with the school year, and we look forward to working with all of you. Please stay safe.